Thank you. And we also have headsets available for the hearing impaired. You can contact one of our staff members at the side table if you need one. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, we do have, Board, we do have a couple of presentations and introductions tonight. We're very pleased to have a number of members of our community. In fact, we're fortunate to live in a community where individuals and organizations step forward and make a difference in the lives of our children. We have a host of people and agencies in our community who regularly help our children with their dental needs, and it is about time that we recognize these people. I would like to ask the following people to step forward. We have Kerry Mistrata, who is the Executive Director of the Cornelia M. Moore Foundation. Kerry, here, why don't you come right up here? In fact, we're going to hand you a plaque as you step forward. We have Caroline Turner, the Executive Director of the Santa Barbara Ventura Counties Dental Society. Martha Angelus. Martha is the Domestic Program Officer for Direct Relief International. Mary Ellen Reese. Mary Ellen is the Oral Health Program Manager from the Santa Barbara County Education Office, Health Linkages Program. Mary Ellen, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Reece.
Reece, good, Reece. Mary Ellen is accompanied by health advocates Sandra Cardona and Josefina Rios. We're glad to have you with us tonight as well. Unable to be with us is Susan Cosort, who is the Manager of the Eastside Family Dental Clinic. Well, Board, for several years, these agencies have had an important partnership role in working with the district and providing services such as dental education, dental screenings, additional dental service to our children. The Cornelia Moore Dental Foundation was founded in 1915 with the purpose of providing free dental treatment to low-income children without Medi-Cal or insurance coverage in Santa Barbara, Galita, or Carpinteria. The goal was to provide immediate assistance for children suffering from dental pain. Referrals are usually made by the school nurses or social service agencies. Parents are usually asked to contribute $20 for the treating dentist, and the dentists are paid a reduced fee schedule as an arrangement with the organization. We're thankful for that. The Santa Barbara Ventura Counties Dental Society has had a continued partnership with our school districts and collaborated with over 30 local agencies interested in oral health. Direct Relief is generally recognized for its international programs, but it's also committed to helping address the health needs of our immediate community. Since 1994, Direct Relief International's Healthy Smiles Dental Program has worked to help bridge the gap of access to oral health services among uninsured, low-income children in Santa Barbara County. The program is designed to provide treatment and preventative modules in an effort to reduce the incident of poor oral health in the community. And Santa Barbara County Education Office's Health Linkages improves oral health of children zero through five through education, prevention, screening, and treatment. We thank these agencies and their partners for the good work that they do for our students in our community. Thank you. [applause] I believe the Board President may have something to add.
Yes, I know that as we all visit school sites, we see so many children in dire need of dental treatment, and it always makes me feel better to know that there is a resource for our students. It makes a huge life-changing difference for them. Thank you so much on behalf of all the Board. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And I would again like to introduce Tom Guajardo. Tom Guajardo is the Executive Director for Special Education for our district. Tom, why don't you come forward? Tom started work yesterday and has settled into his office. Boxes all around, Tom. As of this afternoon, he was able to send and receive email. That's big. Tom has been busy meeting with parents, district staff, SLPA, and the staff of local agencies. He tells us he is pleased with the level of resources available in this community and looks forward to developing working relationships that will further his department's goals. Welcome to the district, Tom Guajardo.
Thank you. I just really appreciate the welcome from parents and community members that have come forward and really made us feel at home with some local products. By the way, I've already finished about half that basket. Thank you. And staff, outstanding. I mean, as I get around and talk to people, and I've gotten to know just about everybody here at the district office as well at the site level, I'm amazed at the great resources that we do have. We truly do have to be able to move our students forward and continue to close the achievement gap, and I'm very glad and proud to be a part of Santa Barbara School District. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome aboard with smooth sailing. Superintendent's report.
Well, it is the start of a new school year, and we are enthused about the new year and renewed opportunity to provide high-quality instruction for our students. We have 2,500 employees. They've been working together and attending trainings, and I'll tell you a little more about that in just a moment. They are ready to serve students and families across the South Coast. On our 470 acres, we have 1.8 million square feet of facility space. Those facilities are clean, floors are polished. Our talented and dedicated staff have welcomed some 15,500 students to school yesterday morning, preschool through 12th grade. We do not have stable enrollment numbers. I know this invariably happens, is someone will take a look at the first-day counts, they'll compare it with October of last year, which is the official enrollment day, Seabed's Enrollment Day, and they'll say, oh, my gosh, the enrollment's gone down, or it's gone up. These are not stable numbers. We will get stable numbers out at the beginning of this next week. Our STAR test results have come in, and we will hear a report on that. I'm pleased to report that our strategies for focused instruction are working and that our reading, English Language Arts, and math scores are moving upward. The increases we saw a year ago in student achievement have been eclipsed and have accelerated significantly this past year. We will continue this year to work on a number of major issues, including the management of our fiscal health since we are again presented with problems by the state budget crisis. We'll have a report on that tonight. And we will also work to resolve our challenges in special education, and we'll have an update on that tonight. We look forward to the new year and renewed partnership with parents and invite our parents to participate in activities at their child's school. This year, 400 Child Development Program and Adams Elementary students benefited from a Costco donation of backpacks and school supplies, and I understand it was great fun. This was one of many back-to-school stories covered by the media during the past few days. Last Monday, we held a half-day special education retreat for all special education teachers and support staff. More than 100 special education staff attended the retreat and engaged in discussions on delivery of services and department organizational changes. It was a successful morning, well-received, and we're very pleased with the work of our staff. We've had an outstanding professional learning communities training this last week with Dr. Anthony Muhammad. We received an overwhelming number of positive verbal comments about his presentations. The elementary certificated staff trained last Tuesday, and the secondary certificated and administrators trained on Wednesday. I'd like to single out the work of two people who had a key role in making last week's training a success. First, for a number of years, Robin Sawaski, our Associate Superintendent, has been focused on the development of site-based professional learning communities. Robin has been a driving force in providing effective standards-aligned instructional leadership training, which has set the stage for Dr. Muhammad's presentations. I'd also like to single out Barbara Kiani for her work in organizing multiple staff trainings. In addition to other responsibilities, Barbara handled the planning and logistics for five back-to-back trainings that happened within just one week's time. Two days of the management meetings and trainings, a special education retreat, Dr. Muhammad's presentation to 350 elementary certificated and administrative staff, followed the next day by Dr. Muhammad's training of 550 secondary certificated staff and administrators, and because of her attention and detail, each one of these events went smoothly. We've had a great start to the new school year. A quick update on teacher layoffs from this spring. Out of the 62.4 certificated FTEs, as they're full-time equivalent positions, we have rescinded or brought back as temps all but one FTE. In general, our personnel office has been able to fill all board-approved classified positions. On Monday, as I said, we'll provide the Board and the public with enrollment numbers. And let me make one final comment on the Board Brief. My office regularly issues a report to the Board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of articles and reports on news items about district matters. A copy of the August 14 Board Brief is on display in the reception area or can be provided through my office. Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to ask Superintendent a question.
Yes.
I wonder if it would be possible, Dr. Sarves, you mentioned student performance and the improved performance data. I wonder if it would be possible to get those data, the evidence of the improvements, in comparison to improvements in the state, statewide improvements, so we'd see where we stand in terms of statewide averages for the last two or three years.
I'm sure, I'm sure it could be.
It's nice to have some context, too.
I think when we have that report, we could talk about that and other issues.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Herron.
Regarding Board Briefs, I would like to just again compliment you and your staff for making those available online also on the district website. Came in handy for me this past week.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to Item C2, the announcement of closed-session action. There are a number of items to report out. One was on Item B1, the approval-denial of an application for inter-district transfers for Santa Barbara Elementary School District. It was moved by Deacon and seconded by Parker to deny the application for an inter-district transfer for the Santa Barbara Elementary School District in case number 0910-1 that passed 4-1 with Dr. Noel casting the no vote. On Item B2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, it was moved by Cordero and seconded by Deacon to authorize the district to offer a partial interim settlement in student case number 7119851196 in the amount of approximately $3,000 for payment and reimbursement of student services. On Item B3, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, it was moved by Cordero and seconded by Herron, I'm sorry, that first vote passed unanimously. It was seconded by Herron to accept the settlement agreement in student case number 2036450665 for payment and reimbursement for student services in the amount of $16,250, and that passed 4-0 with Dr. Noel recusing himself. We will now move on to...
Madam President?
Yes.
I would just like to make sure the record shows that I did not participate in the discussion of B4 in closed session because I believe that it was in violation of the Brown Act.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. Item C3, public comments. Do we have any public comments at this time?
Mr. Zubata.
My name is Daniel Zubata. My son was a student at Santa Barbara High School. He was working several years below grade level, and for three years, I tried to get services for him. The district did not properly diagnose him, and as a result, he was severely behind in his academics and his social skills. This encouraged teasing and bullying by his peers. Three years ago, I sent letters to the school board members. I spoke at public input to request that the board get the school to teach my son to read and write. I requested a meeting with two board members. They did not meet with me. I also went to the county joint powers meeting, where I was ignored again. I was forced to hire an attorney and file for a due process hearing because the school did not provide my son with a free appropriate education. We settled with the district to send my son to a private boarding school. My son did not want to leave his family, and my wife and I did not want him to leave home, but we realized that if he was to get an education, we have to make a very hard decision, so we sent him to the boarding school. The district left us with no other choice. The district could not provide faith. My son has now accepted that in order to get an education, he must stay at the boarding school, but now your attorneys are fighting me again. He needs at least one more year at the boarding school. Your attorneys have offered my son another half a year, and by the time I will have to hire my attorney again and we go into another due process, you will have paid your attorneys more money than an extra six months at the boarding school would cost. I know that my hiring an attorney takes money out of the district, but you left me no with no choice, basically. No one was listening to me, so I had to take money from our family savings to hire an attorney. I would like to meet with members of the Board to discuss this further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. No other public comment? Mr. Herron?
No, but I presume our staff will meet with Mr. Zubata, and I would, I mean, I presume that will happen. Thank you.
I've been, I've been talking with Mr. Zubata, and yes, we will follow up.
Could I, I, last week, when I first played the phone with you last Monday, please?
You know, Mr., I'm not going to have you give further comment on it this time. We're just going to go ahead and move on. Thank you.
Madam President, I...
Yes, Dr. Noel?
...I would like to hear what the executive director, I was wanting to say, if you don't mind.
If it is very, very brief.
Yes, very brief. My first official day was yesterday. I did speak with Mr. Zubata last week when I was in town, and we spoke again before the meeting, and I will be making a phone call tomorrow and getting this resolved very quickly.
Thank you. Consent agenda, are there any items that members would like to pull? Mrs. Deacon?
D1 and D17.
D4, D6, D7, and D8.
Is there a motion to approve the rest?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously. And we will return to the remainder of the consent agenda's items at the end of the meeting.
Just for a quick review, that's with the exception of D1, D4, D6, D7, D8, and D17.
Correct.
Thank you.
We now move on to the action agenda and Item E1, the second reading and adoption of new board policy 5117, inter-district attendance.
Well, we've had a number of discussions of this, and we have been working hard on this. Robin Sawaski will lead this presentation.
Okay, this is the second time, second reading of this board policy. I do want to note that with, as with the elementary inter-district transfer, you know, policy that we had to change this last year, it is difficult, and we're, you know, still looking at inter-district transfers and approving them for hardship cases, but I've received some letters and comments from parents, and I just have told them that it's difficult for all of us, that it's really, truly a fiscal situation, and it's very difficult. And as you can see from this and the data that we've provided, there are, there are quite a few students. The one thing that we added with the help from Mr. Price in looking up some of the information that Board requested specifically on CIF rules, we found that the, and we've added in the proposed language for the athletic exception, that we learned that the CIF, or California Inter-Scholastic Federation Rules, would be, there would be a 12-month loss of eligibility for students who are required to transfer due to non-approval of an inter-district transfer permit after their sophomore year to play, which is when most students are involved in varsity sports, to play that same varsity sport which they previously played. They could play at a below varsity level only and could play a different sport without losing that eligibility. So we've added that in. The other part I want to say is on the last paragraph when it says attaches a chart that includes data on the current inter-district transfer. Current was what we had in place at the time, and it's 2008, 2009, it was before our school year started, which was just yesterday. So we don't have the data, you know, that for the, this year's students. So we would go forward, it would be pretty much the same. Certainly, the ninth graders are pretty much the 10th graders and on like that. And you can see the numbers there. The data also shows the special programs and the ethnicity there, and the special programs are those academies that you asked for that data, how many students actually, each one of the schools and the grade levels. You notice there are none in ninth grade because our programs, like the academies, start in 10th grade. Students start getting eligibility criteria in place in ninth grade, but they are officially approved or go into the program in 10th grade. The athletic teams, you can see that for the ninth grade, the numbers are accordingly, the ninth grade and 10th grade, for the most part, are JV sports. There's no way to actually tag that in our areas, whether they're JV or varsity, but it's looking at the classes that the students are involved in. When they're in a sport, they take a class. So that kind of explains the charts. I also included the letter that went out to parents. The board meeting was on the 11th of August, and by the 12th, we had it translated and ready to go. So it was just a very brief letter, but to all of the inter-district transfer students currently in our secondary schools that we had approved transfers for this year, we sent this letter to. So, and then the policy follows. So any questions or discussion?
Board members, would you like to hear from the public before we discuss this item? Do we have public comment on E1?
Yes, we have two. Mr. Bruce Hamel, followed by Richard Warren, Warber.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hamel? All right, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Bruce Hamel. I'm here to plead with you to reconsider that policy. I live on Highway 1, seven miles from Las Cruces, and I have a daughter in 12th grade at Dos Pueblos and a son in 9th grade at San Marcos. I hope you've read my email that I sent out today. I, we're 35 minutes from Dos Pueblos. Our high school of record, I guess, if we didn't transfer, would be San Ynez, which is about 40 minutes away. I'd just like to say that you're, I feel like you're leaving the rural students of this county out, out of the equation here. You have to realize that none of us that come in from that direction drive past one, two, three, four high schools to get where we're going, as do people coming from Carpinteria, Montecito, Santa Barbara. We're doing this not for any kind of flight from fear as to the programs that we see in our local high schools, but because we're trying to just take our kids to the best school for them. My son was provisionally accepted at the DP Engineering Academy this year, but couldn't enter because you denied his inter-district transfer. So we opted for San Marcos as a second-best choice, and now I get this laid on my doorstep that you want to take that away from him. He's having a wonderful experience in the first three days that he's had there, coming from a small rural school. He was valedictorian. He's just, he's blossoming, and you're just going to yank this rug out from underneath him. And what are you going, how are you going to explain this to the kids who are sophomores this year and going on to their junior year, where they have to perform and be ready for ACT and SAT tests, to be thrown in an entirely new school and switch gears and perform and be ready for college? I just don't see how this is furthering your proposed mission statement that you have on your website, and I would ask you to reconsider this, and if nothing else, if you have to do this, at least stop, at least don't allow the incoming ninth graders next year, and let it just be a process of attrition instead of just cutting everybody off right now and doing all this damage.
Thank you.
Warner.
Warner, okay.
Hi, my name is Richard Warner. Sorry, I'm not wearing a tie. I didn't anticipate speaking and didn't dress appropriately, but here I am. Our son goes to Santa Barbara High now. He's in his, he completed his freshman year, and he's starting his sophomore year in Nevada Academy. And I don't know whether tonight you are going to discuss accepting this new proposal, this new policy in whole or in part, but I wanted to, first of all, say that, make us, just encourage you to adopt the exceptions, and the one where specifically affects us is four. He's in the program. He started the program this week. You know, we were concerned, and we are hoping that you'd follow through on these exceptions when you establish a new policy. I can, I know from my own experience that it's extremely difficult socially and in some cases academically for kids in general, but our son has had his, you know, academic needs really met at Santa Barbara High. It's, the program is a wonderful thing, and we're very excited about it, and we see he has a chance for success there. So that's basically my point. I want to encourage you to maintain those exceptions, particularly four. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Board members, questions and comments about this policy?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Herron?
I just want to make sure I understand all these numbers correctly, because I think it boils down to a very simple, if I read this correctly and the policy correctly, we can disregard and put aside the hardship situation, because that applies to everybody. But you're, we're being, we were being asked to not accept any seventh graders, no eighth graders. Eleventh graders will be seniors, so no eleventh graders. So the only category that counts is 10th graders that can be either in a special program or in sports, because ninth graders don't have special programs. Ninth graders aren't in the 10th grade. So in other words, seventh, eighth, ninth, and 11th are off the table because they don't, the 11th graders are grandfathered in, and seventh, eighth graders don't have, you know, there's not, no way for them to apply for anything other than hardship. And 7th, 8th graders don't have, you know, there's not, no way for them to apply for anything other than hardship. And so we're talking about the 10th graders who are currently in this year and giving them, if they're in a special program, they would be exempted. And if they're in sports, possibly be exempted.
Varsity sports.
Varsity sports, yeah. So it's really, all these numbers are just of no import because it's really just the 10th graders this year that we're talking about.
Well, I want to clarify that because it's the 10th graders that you're talking about in terms of the academy exceptions, the academic programs. Because the 11th graders are coming, but also if there could be a freshman that's on a varsity sport and in that case, the freshman could stay.
Well, read number four. Says 10th grade students. Doesn't say 9th grade. Says 10th grade students.
It should, however, say, I think that should be changed. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Heron, because it should be 9th and 10th. Or high school students, or simply students.
The, actually, the exact words from Mr. Price is, "I spoke with Christine Polly Assistant Southern Section CIF Commissioner. She explained that there would be a 12-month loss of eligibility for a student who was required to transfer due to non-approval of an IDT, inter-district transfer, permit after their sophomore year to play the same varsity sport," and it goes on.
All right, so freshmen, Mr. Price, would not suffer if they were playing varsity as freshmen? They could then go on and play as sophomores?
That's correct.
Okay, so there we go.
So just, so we're talking about 10th graders?
Well, we're also talking about the 68th and 11th graders.
They'll be seniors next year. And so that, I'm sorry.
Right.
I mean, I'm assuming based upon past experience, we probably will accept that one.
Well, that's number two.
Yeah, I'm presuming number two, since we did it in elementary, will probably do it for seniors. And so if you just look at three and four, we're talking about a very specific number of people.
I have a quick question regarding whether or not this needs clarification. For 11th graders going to 12th, because this issue has come up with our sixth graders that we allowed to remain for, on inter-district transfers. There have been cases where there's not space at their home school now and they have been sent away from their home school even though they're allowed to stay in the district. Does that need clarify, clarification on number two? That it's space in the district and not necessarily their home school? I can't imagine that it would happen for a student that was going into 12th grade. But that's just a little bit of a question mark for me. Mr. Price?
I think that. I think that this policy, as well as your other policies, make it clear that there's no guarantee that the student stays in a particular school. So I don't think that it needs additional language.
Okay. Any other board comments? Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I just wanted to clarify what you were saying. You were talking about if we were to approve an inter-district transfer. When you said homeschool, you mean the student's current school?
Sorry, I meant their, their home Santa Barbara school.
Okay, okay, because I was thinking that you meant their, their actual district.
Sorry, I should have been clearer.
Okay, I think that's, I just wanted to ask Mr. Heron. When you were bringing up the issue about 10th graders, was the, your point that, I think there's 56 if we count up all the 10th graders? That it's a small number?
If I want to, if you, if you look at the 10th graders who would qualify and on this chart, you can assume that the ninth graders will be 10th graders. There's seven total at San Marcos. There's 32, of which 14 play athletics, so, but that doesn't count. You know, so it's very few of these. I'm sorry, it's the 10th graders now that are going into 11th grade. So it's, it's the 10th graders going into 11th grade. And so you've got, you know, at San Marcos, one that's on a special program and three that are athletic. Santa Barbara, you've got six on a special program and 14 in athletic. In Dos Pueblos, you don't have anybody on a special program and eight in athletic. So did you add those up?
No, I'm sorry, I was adding all the 10th graders.
No, not just the ones that are on special programs or athletic teams.
Okay.
So it's a small number. I would, I would ask that when we get to a vote, that we vote separately on item three and item four.
Mrs. Deacon?
And I just want to caution, I think, on getting too hung up on these specific numbers because they are from last year. And while we're looking at 10th graders that will be 11th graders next year in the athletic teams, those numbers are very fluid. So again, I just would want to caution us that we're not looking at exactly precise numbers.
The same would go for the academies. We don't know right now which ninth graders got into the academies and who they are. So those numbers, we're guessing that they're approximately like this, but we don't know that for sure.
Any other comments?
Well, I thought you said no ninth graders are enrolled in any academies.
This, this data here shows the ninth graders that are inter-district transfers out of those students who are now in 10th grade. We don't know if any of them or all of them are in special programs, you know, in an academy. This shows last year's 10th graders that presumably are moving up into 11th grade this year in the academies.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I'm fine taking these one at a time, although I will say that I think the numbers, at least on number three, are so small that I, you know, I know personally I'm not going to have a problem on number three. And I certainly think that 11th graders should be able to continue, the same way that we allowed fifth graders to continue and graduate with their class. And we can talk more about athletics if people like, would like to do that. I, one, one concern, and I actually support allowing varsity athletes to stay, especially if they would be forced to lose eligibility for one year because as an 11th grader, if you lose eligibility, the likelihood of ever coming back into a varsity sport as a 12th grader is quite slim in many cases. But I am a little concerned here about identification of varsity students this coming year because if there are some, and we don't know how many, inter-district students who would like to play varsity sports, the coaches may be pressured in some ways by parents to find a reason to allow them to become varsity players so that they can maintain their transfer status. So I don't know if we talked to the athletic directors about how this would play out, but I do see some possible issues there, or pressure on coaches in particular as students are identified and I don't want those to be the determining factors.
All right, Mrs. Cordero?
Well, my concern, and I actually don't have many concerns about any of these, of the four exceptions or the, excuse me, the fifth, for extraordinary hardship. But I do have concern, and it somewhat piggybacks on what Ms. Deacon was just saying, that in any of these cases such as, excuse me, I'm sorry, the special programs or the athletics, that stu, in-district students could conceivably be excluded in order to provide space for the out-of-district students to allow them to continue. And that would make me nervous. And so when I was looking at the, at the board policy itself, number three of the board policy, where it's students who are enrolled during, which is basically the same thing we were just looking at. But I thought we might want to add some language such that in-district students may not be denied access in order to accommodate out-of-district students. And I don't know if that's implicit in what's already there or if we need to be explicit in how we state it.
I look at this and see that it's, everybody's already in. These are for kids that have already been placed in as of yesterday into the academies. And so I feel like that decision was already made and this will just be sort of memorializing that they get to continue through.
Well, I, sorry, I guess that was the question. Do they automatically, if they're in, in 10th grade, do they automatically continue into 11th grade?
Yes, they do unless something happens, they choose to, and 12.
And 12. And is it possible that a student might enter Santa Barbara High School or one of the, one of the other, let's say DP, in 11th grade and apply for one of these academies? Or if they enter late in the process, are they just forever excluded from the academies?
I don't know the exact answer to that. Most kids go through the whole thing because there are prerequisite courses and, you know, the group moves along. But I don't know if a student who has all the math and presumably has some of the prerequisites could go in.
Because that was actually the basis for my question. If a student becomes a district student, enters, let's say, in 11th grade, wants to be part of one of the academies, but an out-of-district student has already been part of the academy since 10th grade and so therefore has a space, would, could that out-of-district student conceivably be denying the in-district student a space in the program?
Well, I think I can partially answer that in that once you're in an academy, unless you're failing out of your classes, they enroll to the maximum. And so yes, I've heard of cases in the high schools where 11th, an 11th grader has moved into the Santa Barbara High attendance area and wants to join VADA, but VADA is full. And there may be a couple of in, inter-district transfers sitting in those spaces, but they never kick kids out in order to allow a later student to come in and take their place. And I don't know that I would want that even if they were on an inter-district transfer because those, those kids have moved together as a cohort and have been there for the entire process. So I don't know that I would consider it appropriate for.
Well, you know, I share, I share your concern pedagogically. But given the nature of how basic aid works and the, sort of the catalyst for making this change is a basic aid status, would mean that if a student is living in the district, their property taxes could be funding another student to participate in an enhancement program for which they will not have access, to which they will not have access. To me, that raises a real issue of, also, an issue of fairness. I mean, I certainly don't want a student to have to leave the program after they've been in it for a couple of years. But there is that issue of can we, is it, is it appropriate to deny a student who is in the district access so that a student who is outside of the district can complete the program?
Board members, any other comments on that or anything? Mr. Heron?
Can you give me an example of what a unique high school academic program not replicated would be in our system?
Exactly those academies. If, for instance, at Carpinteria High School, there is not a multimedia arts academy, I mean, design academy, something similar to these.
I'm talking about the other.
Outside of it.
It's or, other unique.
Or other.
High, I mean, is that a mock trial?
No, no. Mock, well, mock trial is in all of our schools. They compete across the county. Every, every high school I know of has a mock trial team.
Just tried that one. How about the economic teams that win all sorts of awards? Is that a unique high school academic program?
A team that's outside, that's kind of extracurricular, is not a program that's an academic program where kids take classes and they're a part of a curricular, you know. This, these that are listed are different. That wording is in there just so that something, maybe there's going to be a new academy or a new program. We want it to cover that.
Would virtual enterprise qualify? I'm sorry.
Well, let me clarify. The wording is in here to clarify that. So it says such programs include, and then it just lists the academy. It doesn't include virtual enterprise or ROP courses, for example, or a number of other courses.
So it doesn't include the courses that may have completely different students in it every year?
That's true.
Nor clubs, nor additional co-curricular activities.
These are full programs that usually start in 10th grade and part of our pathways program and all. It's not a single class.
Wait, Mr. Heron, Dr. Noel?
Would you include the theater arts program at San Marcos? Because it's a very strong program and would, and would, or the, actually, the whole music program at San Marcos is a pretty strong program and it is a program.
It is a program, but that's not, it's not a unique program because all schools have music programs. It may be distinguished in certain ways for its program. But it, but we have music programs in all of our schools and all the schools around us have music programs. And it's not, you take music, you take that class.
Basically, it boils down to these academies. That's what I hear you saying.
Yes.
Currently.
Because I could generate, for example, another informal program might be that a student wants to work very closely with a couple of particular teachers and put together a combination of classes. Hasn't got a formal stamp on it, but it's, but from an academic point of view, could be highly programmatic. But that wouldn't count, right?
Not at this point. These are all formalized programs.
What happened to the Apple Academy? I see it's not on here.
It's not on, there are.
It is, it's the Academy of Public Policy and Leadership.
Yes.
It's there.
What?
The Academy of Public Policy and Leadership.
Oh, there it is.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, maybe we just need to add the word formalized or something like that to make it very specific. I understand the need to do it to accommodate future programs like this, but I do also understand there might be some confusion among parents who might make, want to make the case that there was a program that we don't consider an academic program, but they might think it was unique. So I don't know if the word formalized does the trick, but I hear us talking about the ways these programs are distinct from other things. And I wonder if there's some language that we can find that says that.
So, Mrs. Deacon, you would suggest that it say, in a high school academy or other unique formalized.
Academic programs?
High school academic program.
I don't know if that is specific enough, but maybe it's closer to where we want to be.
I think it helps, Mrs. Deacon. Any other comments? Dr. Noel?
Yes, I, I have no problem with three or four because I don't like the whole thing. And I'm just, I'm way back at the, what I consider to be a moral question that, that we really loved these people when they added to our revenue. And now we want to get rid of them because it will enhance our revenue to get rid of them under basic aid. And I just, that just doesn't go down well with me. My preference, and I don't think it's going to be an option, would be to grandfather these kids in phases, starting in 9th grade next year. That, that gives it a sense of fairness, justice, and, and truth, goodness, and beauty, I guess, all the other values that are good.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. And maybe Mr. Smith could address that because that would cost us millions of dollars, as I recall.
Well, I think Meg will be able to show you the multi-year projection later tonight and she can tell you where she's subtracted out the inner districts. And that would be a better graphic representation than me trying to do it off the top of my head.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, that doesn't help us on making this decision at this point. Because I feel much like Dr. Noel and I felt the same way on elementary to some degree. I have a real hard time. We've heard a lot of people asking for exemptions in the elementary district with heart-wrenching stories. And to sit here and say, oh, because you play athletics, you're going to be exempted. Or because you're in one of these higher academies, you're going to be exempted. I just, I don't see how you can tell people with heart-wrenching stories, life and death kind of things, you're not included, but so easily say, these people can be included. I have a hard time with that.
Maybe I can put it in more specific terms. You're going to hear a report on the state budget and the effect on the district. We're, we're very soon going to be in budget-cutting mode again. And, and not this spring. I mean, we need to do these things now. I mean, we need to do these things now. We'll be looking at cutting services for all students, and that means cutting services for students who live within the school district and denying them services because we are, we are the victims of a state budget crisis that isn't getting any better. And I don't know if Eric wants to further address that now, because I think we should wait for that report.
Well, it is all information that we've had.
I mean, I can have Meg come over here and demonstrate if that's what you want. I mean, we can just move that, that portion of it up. But, I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, unbeknownst to us, is after the state, after we adopted our budget, the state adopted a budget basically that includes a $250 per ADA hit, which roughly equates to about $3.4 million in one time, that will be taken, you know, right off the top from our reserve. And then if you compound that with our structural deficit that moved forward, as Dr. Sarvis mentioned, we're talking about significant cuts, once again. I mean, it's something we couldn't anticipate in our NYPD because we didn't know about it. But, so we're looking closer and closer at what's going to happen relative to our basic aid status. And obviously, the elementary will be in this year. We think the one-time cut will force the secondary district into basic aid status for one year, then we'll be catapulted, catapulted back out. And then depending on what the board does with the inter-district transfer issues, we'd be back in probably in '11, '12. I mean, obviously, you know, there's a variety of variables with respect to basic aid, state aid, enrollment deficits, and things of that nature. But, you know, our mantra's always been to try and get there quicker, to try and insulate us somewhat from revenue, you know, at least general purpose revenue cuts, although, as Meg will tell you, is now what's happening is that because basic aid districts have been having a free ride, now they're starting to cut on the categorical side for basic aid districts. And that'll be part of the presentation, and that will be something that we will have to have a paradigm shift in this district about because we have a rule that, you know, restricted programs are self-contained and pay for themselves, with the exception of special ed and, to some degree, transportation. So, I mean, I could pontificate about this for some more until Meg gets over here, but...
That's okay, Mr. Smith.
But I did send her a text to tell her to come on over.
Mrs. Deacon?
Oh, well, I would just like to say, first of all, I think it's really hard to send all students away from our district. I mean, I think we all feel very torn, and this is never an easy decision. I do think, actually, that when we talk about secondary students, that it's harder for them to leave their schools than it is for elementary students. I mean, I know it's really hard on the parents at the elementary level, but I think it's specifically more difficult on students at the secondary level. Elementary students move to schools where they get English and math and all the subjects that they have gotten in our schools, but the students in the, in the exception categories we're looking at here might not have those opportunities at the schools that they would be moving to. And, and just a footnote on athletics, I don't want to belabor this, but I think athletics help keep students in school. I think they eliminate truancy and dropout rates and things like that. And so I think it's really, it's an important part of their education, and I think it actually improves academic achievement for those students. So that's, that's where I land, where I do on, on the athletics piece.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I also want to, I, I agree that I think that the students who have started in the specialized programs, to a certain extent, we, I think, we didn't enter into a formal contract with them, but we certainly gave them the expectation, when we allowed them to enroll in those classes, that they would be able to complete those programs, assuming that they remain eligible for them. So I think there is a difference between that expectation and a student who simply enrolled in a school, who, if they enroll in another school, can still complete their academic program. Even more so, I think, for athletics because most, I think, most athletes would not enroll in a particular school if they knew that doing so, would not have chosen to go to the, to our district, had they known that doing so would possibly cost them a year of eligibility. And so for those students, I think it would be really unfair to change, to impose that, that change on them sort of midway through. In addition, and really, truly, even more so over the specialized programs, the athletes are the only ones in any of these categories who literally would not be able to do what they need, what, what they need to do. They, they would not be able to play their sport. Even in the specialized program, students would still be able to complete their academic, an academic requirements. So I think that's really important. I also want to point out that we can, we can see by our charts that the advanced programs are not particularly diverse. I would be willing to bet that the athletic programs are much more so. And so I, I really think that maintaining both of those, if we are going to allow these exceptions, which I think we should, that really we should maintain both of them.
Thank you, Dr. Noel.
I, I just, there is a case we've had recently where the CIF waived that requirement, I believe. Mr. Andrews knows about it.
Do you mean in the case of a specific student who suffered a particular hardship?
Well, they, the student went to the new school, and the school joined in the request to the CIF for eligibility, and the CIF, I, I don't, I'm not privy to the details at all, but I just read something that indicated that had been resolved because the CIF made a waiver.
That is very, that is very true. It was an unusual case, and we do not believe, based on our discussions with CIF, that that would be the case for these, these 30 students.
Could I comment on that just briefly? Due to the fact that there was considerable debate about whether a hardship waiver would be approved by the CIF, because their rules do not specifically call for that to occur, I actually spoke to one of the assistant commissioners over the whole program, whose area of focus includes eligibility. And she explained to me that hardships are not allowed under these exact circumstances that are before your board, meaning where there is an involuntary transfer due to a school district changing its attendance rules, period. Now, whether or not in a particular case, there are additional factors that come into play, I can't imagine what it was, and I don't know this case, but it's a hard and fast rule. I, I think it's about as clear as it could be. And if I could, Madam President, I'd just like to add one additional comment on number three. I'm recalling a discussion that the board had with respect to the language of number three when it was before you last time, and I think it was Mr. Herron, that pointed out that the list was not exclusive. And I think that in discussions, at least with staff, it was felt that the board might want to allow the window to remain slightly open, so that if there are unique academic programs, whatever that means, that are not included in this list of academies, that people could apply. And depending upon the district's circumstances at the time, depending upon what the unique program was that maybe nobody thought about, not necessarily a program for high-achieving students, that the district would consider allowing that student to continue at his or her high school. And of course, there is always a recourse to a board appeal following a denial by staff.
Thank you.
We know how successful those have been. Yeah. That's why I asked the question, what is a unique school academic program? And the answer I got is there are none. And so, you know, it seems like it's a, it's a phrase that is meaningless.
Well, my answer would not necessarily be, there are none. I think it would have to be in the circumstances of somebody making an application and setting forth, you know, what their particular position is, and then having staff review it. There wasn't an attempt made to look at every single program in the, in the high school district to see whether or not it could conceivably qualify.
Dr. Noel? All right, at this point, is there a motion? Mr. Herron?
I'd like to move that number three be deleted.
All right. Any discussion on just number three being deleted? There's a motion in a second.
I just have a question. Are we specifically talking about deleting it from the board policy?
5117, yes.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, it fails 3-2. Is there another motion? Mr. Herron?
I'd like to move that number four be deleted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, it fails 3-2. Is there another motion?
I would like to move to adopt board policy 5117 as currently drafted. However, I do want to, I don't know if we, as, in the final draft.
In the final draft, with or without the word "formalized"?
With.
With the word "formalized." As part of that motion, we need to delete board policy 5117.1 and its accompanying AR.
Actually, can I reverse my...
Yes.
I'm going to say without.
Without the "formalized."
The "formalized" word. But I will include and delete the previous, what is it?
It's board policy 5117.1 and AR 5117.1. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Herron?
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Smith. By keeping three and four in, what is the economic cost of that?
Well, I think I can chime in that we don't know because we don't know the students exactly. We can only say that it's going to be about, if it's roughly 50 students.
Well, the problem is, is you wouldn't do it just on a per-unit ADA basis because it's the relationship between the decreased revenue limit entitlement vis a vis the increase in property tax values, and when those two lines cross. So I don't know.
Mr. Herron?
In the elementary, in the elementary district, at one point, you told me that for every exception, it was a $10,000 cost, going one way.
Well, how many people are in these academies? That's simple.
Well, between three and four, just looking at last year's numbers, we're talking about roughly 30 people.
Roughly 30.
So is, is the 10,000 still a relative number in the secondary district, or is that a totally different apples and oranges?
It's going to be higher because you have a higher revenue limit.
So we're talking a $300,000 or $400,000 decision?
Probably.
Without knowing what that number is? And that's, being asked to vote on that.
Mrs. Deacon? I don't think your mic is on.
Going back to the numbers, if, if we allow 11th graders to graduate with 12th graders, I think we're only looking at seven total in the academies. Seven students total. Sports, possibly looking at 50.
All right, there is a motion. Mr. Herron?
We have Meg here. Does she have the numbers regarding the, in elementary, you told us if we cut this many people, we would, the bottom line would be this, this many people, the bottom line would be this. Do you have those numbers for secondary?
I do have those numbers for secondary.
Yeah, that's what they're trying to grapple with, is the simulations relative to secondary inner districts, going back to their district of residence, in relationship to the secondary district landing in basic aid status. Notwithstanding the $250 per ADA one-time hit.
Okay, now, this is exactly what you saw last, when I came here in 609, June 30th, I mean, June 9th, '09. Sorry, it's been a long week. It's only Tuesday. On the first column, it's our P2 attendance times our base revenue limit is 67 million, our neals for needy, and our beginning teacher salaries. It has the new deficit factor in of 1.81645. That's the 18.355% that's been changed since the last time you saw it, which was 17.967%. So the deficit went up. So we get a total deficit of revenue limit of 55 million. And then there's some miscellaneous expenditures, get down to the bottom line. This, I'm sorry, I didn't change my yeses and nos. I'm sorry about that down at the bottom. But in the first, 2009, 10, we will not be in basic aid. We have $2.2 million in state aid. The next year is 10, 11, and with the new deficit factor, we're projecting to go in, no, this is an estimate. Eric brought me in here really quickly, so I changed some of these numbers. This one is, we don't go into basic aid quite as much into a million. It's like 4.46,000. I didn't, I missed something on here. I just noticed, sorry. But we're about $446,000 in basic aid next year without sending any inter-district transfers back. However, and, and we are, if we send them back next year in 10, 11, that means that we are prior year funded. So I'm using the prior year funded ADA numbers. 2011, 12 is when, if we do not send any of the ADA back, or the children back, then we'll be about, I would say, about 1.4 million into basic aid. I apologize for not changing these numbers out. To tie to my revenue limit calculations, then in 2011, 12, adopted budget, without the 280 inter-district transfers using prior year, that's when we would see it. We'd be well into basic aid. And that number is about, I would say, we're about 2.5 million in basic aid in that number, in that year.
So are you saying the 1.146 is really about 400,000, the 2 million's about 1.4, and then the 3 million's about?
You know what? Let me do something. I can show you that. Because here's, my revenue limit calculations are right here for the district. So there's a lot more information on here than what you really need to know, except, you know, I condensed the other ones. But this gets kind of complicated, so I'll try to, but let's just go down to the bottom line. Here are the numbers that we're projecting right now. In 9, 10, 2.1, 2, 442,000, and about 2.49.
And is the 442,679 inclusive of the inner districts being sent back, or on the natural?
That is on the natural. You see the inter-district transfers come out in 2011, 12, due to prior year funding.
I see, that, that accounts for the huge discrepancy between the 443 and the 2494.
Exactly.
All right, board members, any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Yes, it was seconded by Deacon. Mr. Herron?
If we don't send anybody back in 10, 11 versus sending 280 back in 10, 11... If we don't send anybody back in ten eleven versus sending two hundred and eighty back in ten eleven, there's no difference?
No, you'll still be in basic aid, just not as deep. And you could subtract that two eighty out, right, Meg, to show that?
The two, the two eighty is out.
You put it back in, is what I meant. If they did not send the inter-districts back, put the two eighty back in in ten eleven, and it'll be reflected in eleven twelve. Or, I don't know how your spreadsheet's set up, but just so the prior-year guarantee is reflected in fiscal year eleven twelve.
Hold on a second. Okay, maybe I should put my glasses on. Okay. So plus two eighty.
I think you missed the plus. You missed the plus.
No, I'm hitting the plus, that's the equals.
Different keyboard.
It is, it, no, it's a different Excel. Why does it do, why does it do that? Okay. I can do this. Oh, okay, hold on. Sorry. I can do this.
Now, let me just ask a couple of questions.
Can't just increase one of those numbers by two eighty, Meg?
That's what I'm trying to do. I'm getting.
It's in Excel, and I don't know why those, and it's laptop, I don't tell. Did that go up by two hundred and eighty? No, this is still recognizing this.
Well, Mr. Heron, in the interest of time, what are your other questions?
Meg? We're talking about keeping, that's it. We're talking about implementing these revocations in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven of, let's just say, your number of two hundred and eighty students. Does that make any difference in two ten to eleven?
Does it make any difference?
In the bottom line?
Absolutely.
In two ten to eleven?
Not ten eleven.
No, ten eleven, not ten eleven.
No, I'm talking about two ten, we're taking, we're gonna let two hundred and eighty students go approximately in two ten to eleven.
Yes.
Does that make any difference in your numbers?
No.
Is there any urgency to letting those people go in two ten to eleven?
Yes, because of the prior-year guarantee. So what happens is that the prior-year guarantee in revenue limit methodology means that you will always get the greater of current or prior year ADA. So since you're in a declining enrollment pattern, therefore, it will not be reflected until the subsequent year. So that's why you're seeing the loss of those students in ten eleven is when it actually occurs, but it doesn't affect the bottom line until eleven twelve.
Okay. And the one other question, if we exempt fifty people for some reason in the elementary district, that was about $10,000 a student. Do you have any feel for fifty students in the secondary district? What, what that amounts to and, and effect on dollars?
And Meg, I think, I think what Board Member Heron means by that is that it's not a straight revenue limit calculation. It's the relationship between increasing property tax values and the decreasing entitlement. So if your entitlement was fifty-six hundred per student in the elementary, then you're making some assumption about increased property taxes, and you're coming to a $10,000 aggregate, you know, incremental unit. I, I don't have that figure off the top of my head. You could probably tell them what the base revenue limit is in the secondary district, but I couldn't, you know, unless you take the property taxes and divide it by the ADA, I couldn't come up with the other figure.
The base revenue limit for eleven twelve is seventy-five hundred dollars. And fifty, seven fifteen, seventy-five fifteen twenty-eight. And that's the number you would times that fifty ADA by, and that would give you that amount. But then, then it's deficit, and then it goes through all these huge calculations, and then the property taxes too.
Yeah, but that, the first part only shows you one side of the calculation, which is the bucket decreasing. You're not seeing the increasing property tax value. So that's probably how we came up. I don't know. I don't think, he said, I said, ten thousand, maybe Meg told you ten thousand, but that's probably how she arrived at that.
Dr. Noel?
I, I heard just today that we're having an increase in enrollments. And, and I don't know, I asked, and I guess we don't have the data, but if we're assuming continuing decline in enrollments, what if that assumption doesn't bear out? And then the theory, the theory instead with this call that I got was that it's the, the economy that people are coming back from private, people are coming from private schools. And one has to make some predictions, I guess.
I, I have a different theory. And Meg, you might wanna talk about the numbers we saw today.
Yes, and I, I'm not even sure Eric has seen the ones that I'm looking at, but we got preliminary hearing estimates, like who's sitting in the seats as of right of today, yesterday and today. And they're talking about in the elementary, four hundred, four thousand five hundred and forty-eight. And in high school, nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen. So this is enrollment for the second day.
Is the four five with charters in it?
No.
Okay.
So then I took what Eric and I had projected for the elementary for this year in ADA. Or, I'm sorry, for enrollment was four thousand three hundred and eighty-five for the elementary and nine thousand five hundred and seventy-six. Now, ours included the special education. I do not know if these include the special education or not.
Well, I, I need to caution again that, that these are not stable numbers yet. And we won't actually know until October, the first Wednesday in October, which is the official enrollment date, as to how it'll affect the calculation. And it'll be at that time that we'll ask for another review of this.
All right, Dr. Noel?
Well, I just wanted to get this clear in my head. So we're looking at five hundred, little under, under three hundred students, maybe higher than you expected. If that, if that happened, what would happen to these numbers? Particularly the threshold that gets you on and off, what happens with threshold for, for?
Well, probably what happens is you'd get into basic aid later because what's happening is you'll see on the multi-year is that, you know, the deficit still decreases the entitlement. But if our, if we saw a huge swing in enrollment up, then we would be back in the revenue limit status. And so there, we would be subject to the volatility of revenue limit funding, and so.
Yeah, but under revenue limit, more students are better.
That's correct, and it's the opposite under basic aid. But also remember, under revenue limit, you're entirely dependent on state aid as your vehicle for funding, so you're also subject to its volatility. Which, you know, there's a lot of discussion about that with Prop ninety-eight and, you know, why we're always on this roller coaster.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, with that, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The motion carries three two. We now move on, and I wanna caution board members that we're running quite late at this point, but we're on E two, the second reading and adoption of revised administrative regulation five one 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 point one, District Residency and Administrative Regulation five one 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 point one two, residency based upon parent guardian employment.
This is an important intended policy to the one we just passed to establish the basis for, for showing residency. And again, Robin Swawski will make this presentation.
Okay, and in this one, there weren't, there were very minor changes, as indicated on the redline version that came from Mr. Price's office, taking the language that you suggested last time. And you can see those changes. So very little changed here. If you have questions.
Thank you. Any board member comments? Mrs. Deacon?
A quick question. On this paragraph where we describe district residency, the second from the last line, it says, "Are admitted to an alternative district school." I think I know what this means, but you could read it multiple ways. Do we mean one of our district's alternative schools and not another district's alternate school?
Well, yeah. Okay. Yes, we're talking about.
Yeah, our own alternative schools.
Yes.
Right, Dr. Noel?
Yeah, on the next page, the backside of that figure. The charter schools are not mentioned, but there are no, no residency requirements for charter schools.
No, the, state of California, in most cases, is the attendance area for charter schools.
Yeah, I understand. Well, my, I don't know whether Warren's saying that in here because we have a number of charter schools. You mentioned regional occupational center programs, which don't seem to have, I guess you're right.
Right, and that's an ed code. I don't know that there is an ed code, well, there's probably an ed code to say that. I don't know. Mr. Price, do you know? Yes, there's lots of ed code about charter schools.
Mr. Price, do we need to add that language?
Anybody in a joining county?
You don't need to because it's a matter of state law. But if you want to add those words for the sake of clarity, then there's no reason not to.
So the language would be district residency is not required for enrollment in a district charter school or a regional occupational center or program?
Yes.
Okay, any other comments?
We'd have to put the ed code.
Yeah, we'd, we'd need to have the ed code in. Mrs. Cordero?
In the very first paragraph, I just wondered where it's listing the exceptions. Unless the student's parents or legal guardian request and are granted an intra-district transfer, does that, would that part include parent, families who opt to have their student transfer from a PI school? I wondered if we needed to state PI schools.
I personally don't think that we need to because they're gonna get a transfer and it's gonna, if they're coming from a PI school, so it just seems inclusive.
Okay, and then under number one, I apologize if I am just being dense, but I read this many, many times. And I can't understand that last phrase, is situated within the district. The student physically resides with his or her parents or legal guardians within the district for at least fifty percent of the school days and nights during the period in which school is in session, is situated within the district.
I'm sorry, I'm laughing because it's a remnant from the previous iteration of this sentence. So.
And it, it creeps up again later, so.
It should say, the student physically resides with his or her parents or legal guardian within the district. It's just redundant. So just cross off that is situated within the district at the end of sentence number one.
Okay, thank you. Under number six, the student is confined to a hospital or other residential health facility within district boundaries for treatment of a temporary disability. Is there, since it specifically says temporary, is there a term on that? Is it for the, just for the duration of the time that the student is confined to the hospital? Is it for the entire school year?
I would have to look at that ed code to see if, do, do you recall, Mr. Price, if there's a time limit on that? It seems to me it would be within the time they're there. However, I.
No, I, I think it's very broad. It's just when a student, during the period that a student is in one of these facilities or a hospital, they're entitled to attend school in the district, notwithstanding their other residency. And beyond that, it's a matter of interpretation that I'm, I'm not sure that we want to try and fine tune or that you want to try and fine tune.
I believe that's all the ed code says about it.
Right.
Okay, so, because my question was, would we have a student leave mid-year once they were no longer confined to the hospital?
I believe that's addressed later in the ed code. Students meeting, oh, sorry, in the ed code and the policy. Students meeting district residency requirements who move out of the district during the school year shall be allowed to complete the school year.
Okay.
So page three or four.
So then, oh, then I had a question about number seven. And it's not really a question, it's more of a statement. Because we specifically say, this isn't really residency, it seems to me confusing to have it under the residency policy. I'm wondering why we don't just leave it under the inter-district transfer policy?
I think Mr. Price wants to talk about that. This was, this was a tricky piece about the ed code because once you grant an inter-district transfer approval of the application, you wanna be clear that you're not granting residency. Mr. Price can.
When a student is allowed to attend on account of the parent's employment, they're granted residency in the district. And under state law, they're allowed to continue to attend as long as the parents remain employed. We wanted to make it clear, however, that any students who are granted inter-district transfers for whatever reason are not what the education code refers to as deemed residents. It's just, without this kind of language, without this kind of lack of clarity, it creates a potential problem in determining when an IDT might be granted for a hardship or something else, whether or not that would confer residency. And without worrying about the individual paperwork in every case, we thought it would be useful to have it as a matter of policy stating that it's not a grant of residency.
When we, when we grant an inter-district transfer, does that, is that student conferred? Do we say that the student has gained residency?
No.
No. So isn't, so is a student being given an inter-district transfer because of the employment of the parent different statutorily than a regular inter-district transfer?
Yes.
Okay, so they are given, they are deemed to have been given residency?
Yes, I would call it limited residency because it's terminable at such point as the parent's employment might change.
The reason I think this is confusing is because the, the overall statement at the beginning says, "Students shall be deemed to have complied with district residency requirements if, a student, if he or she meets any of the following criteria." So it seems like at the beginning, we're saying they, they have been granted residency. And then in the middle, we say they are not deemed to have been given residency. Is there maybe a separate list? Or maybe take it out of the list and just make a separate item for that?
So just have a list that goes one through six, and then this be the next paragraph without a number seven?
Yeah, actually that.
Mrs. Deacon?
Grammatically, that, I mean, that just makes sense because it, number seven doesn't follow from the premise that sets up the other numbered items. And we have paragraphs that are not numbered that follow number seven.
I think that would be fine.
So we would read, if a student has been admitted under ARR five one one two because of parent's employment by the sound of our school districts, they are. He or she is not deemed to be district residents within the meaning of ed code section, et cetera. Does that make sense for a paragraph? Does that make sense for a paragraph?
I mean, I think it would stand alone the way it's written.
Well, alone, it just, it would read where the student has been admitted under ARR because of apparent employment by the San Barbara school districts, period, so that's not a sentence.
Would you please state that again?
If a student has been admitted under AR 5111.12 because of a parent's employment, should it be by or within?
I'm sorry, but I think this is, I hate to jump in and complicate it, but this is wrong, and I failed to properly explain it before. Under ed code section 48204, when the district allows a non-resident student to attend San Barbara schools under your policy because their parents are employed by the district, they achieve residency under the state law for as long as the parents are employed. So the first sentence of subsection seven is a correct statement of the law. The following language is merely intended to not confuse, however it might, to clarify that in connection with other types of grants. So what I would suggest is that the second sentence of number seven be pulled out and set forth in its own paragraph.
All right, so number seven, first sentence stays the same, then there's a new paragraph that simply says, "Students granted inter-district transfers pursuant to board policy 5117," et cetera. That's a paragraph below seven? All right, is that acceptable?
Yes.
All right, so, any further comments?
Just one really quick one. Under, at the bottom, where we have the list of one through four, under number three, it says "and." Does the "and" only apply to number three? Or does it, is it one and four, two and four, three and four?
Yes, that was the intention.
Yes, we have always used that utility service bill, I mean, that's been in place for a long time.
So that's required for all of them?
Yes.
I might suggest that we include, that we put that at the beginning then, say, most current utility service bill, gas, electric, or water, and one of the following?
Thank you, I think that's a nice clarification, Mrs. Cordero.
Thank you.
Dr. Noel?
I just wanted a clarification from Mr. Price on page three of four, third paragraph. As I read it, it's kind of, it's self-canceling because we don't have a contiguous, our district does not have a contiguous state.
Let's see where you're in the graph on page three.
...are designated, may with approval of the county superintendent of schools, admit a student living in an adjoining state contiguous with the district.
The only changes that staff and I proposed to your long existing policy were those that were dictated by current events, and this policy, like so many others, is intended to be a reflection of general state law because it follows the CSBA format. However, in the event of a severe earthquake, perhaps the geographical situation could be altered and this could come into play.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, that honed, sharp legal judgment.
Okay, we have, as it stands, we have an AR 5111.1 that's been amended, and no comments on 5111.12. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I just want to point out that in the red line, I don't know if we need to point that out, but that, that superfluous phrase repeats itself. So I will move that we adopt, sorry, that we adopt AR 5111.1 as amended.
And 5111.12?
And five point, and 5111.2.
And, Mr. Price, refresh my memory, do we need to delete any previous ARs?
No, these would replace the existing ARs.
These are replacing existing ARs, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously.
Let me add that we'll put the amended or corrected copy in the board brief.
Thank you.
So that it's readily available, although it'll be available on our website as well.
We now move on to item E3, approval of recommendation on medical marijuana dispensaries.
Medical marijuana dispensaries are a problem to us. Too many of our students that come on campus high have as their source marijuana from the dispensaries. Too many of our students who sell marijuana on our campuses get it from the medical marijuana dispensaries. It's a problem, and we have seen a permitting of one, just one block away from San Barbara Junior High recently.
My first one.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to the city council, I would like to send them a letter advising the changes that you've discussed already and that you're recommending, and I'd like to address that issue with them.
I think.
Dr. Noel?
Do we have these maps so they can be put on the screen?
Yeah, Bud, why don't you come forward, and Dave, would you put these maps on the screen, please? I'm sorry, Bud, I didn't mean to take your presentation away from you.
Any questions?
Bud Andrews is our administrator for safety, welfare, and attendance.
All right, there's the map. Mrs. Cordero?
I thought that we had discussed this last time, and maybe we didn't actually agree to it, so forgive me if I'm stating my own preference rather than what we agreed to. But on B, on the second, on the backside of the page, require district notification when an application is being, I thought we had, at least I had suggested that we, that we ask for notification when any application is being processed.
And yes, I think there was general board agreement on that, so would you suggest that we switch that to require district notification when an application is being processed?
Period.
Period.
Yes.
Any other comments?
And then, I just wondered if it was possible to extend the time from, in C, rather than 30 minutes to one hour.
It was certainly possible to request it, this is only a recommendation we're making to the city council.
The reason being that maybe not so much before school, but certainly after school, students mill around a bit, and so by the time they're actually leaving, it could be more than a half hour after school has ended.
Very easily.
So your recommendation would be that the last one, it'd be schools with an open campus policy and one hour after school?
Yeah, I'd like, sorry, I'd like to see before school as well, but, but I think we can make a strong rationalization for after school, but I would recommend both.
Dr. Noel?
I agree with Mrs. Cordero. I'm concerned with two geographic vectors here, one of them, the distance, and the other one of the routes. It used to be that it was against the law in California to sell alcohol within a mile of any school.
That would work nicely.
Well, I feel strongly enough about this that I'd say a mile sounds good, but one could probably be more discriminating and say, well, you know, certainly a big hunk of Milpus Street, I would think would be very problematic, it already is, and I'm shocked to see that on there. Look at that on the Correo, coming over toward the Correo entrance to Santa Barbara High School, and Santa Barbara Junior High, that's just astounding to me. But, and then the other vector is the routes. There ought to be like clean passage routes.
Well, and another district concern is that we believe as a district that our childcare centers are educational programs, and from what I can only presume, and I need to go over to the office, the city office, and ask, is with the recent approval of the 331 North Milpus dispensary, as the car drives, it's about 650 feet, but as the crow flies, it's about 470 feet, which in my opinion violates their own ordinance, it can't be within 500 feet. So I don't really know how they interpret our.
I'm sorry, Mr., can you clarify 500, 470 feet from which site?
From the Parma Child's Care Center to the 331 North Milpus dispensary.
Okay.
And they just, on the 21st, opened the 500 North Milpus, which is about 997 feet from the center of Santa Barbara Junior High.
Bud, would you please also clarify children's centers, the specification of children's centers?
The two that I know of, one I think is okay, the one over on Haley, and then the Parma Center over on.
I guess what I had in mind is that we consider our children's centers to be our school sites as well, and if you'd like to stipulate that in the action on this, it would be useful, and we would put it in the letter as well.
So extend distance from schools and, from school property? Is that?
I think it should be the boundary, not the dead center of the school, since we have schools with 40 acres.
From, from district, how would we word this?
We could say district schools including children's centers.
From district.
District school boundaries.
From district school boundaries.
Or property.
Including children's centers.
Including children's centers. Any other comments?
Well, I'd like to rule out, it's hard to do this on the fly, but all of Annapamoo, east of State Street, as far as I'm concerned, all of Milpus, at least down to Scolari's, and I drive, I drive that a lot because I live in that area, and there's just the traffic of kids, after lunch is enormous.
And both of those dispensaries are within that range as well.
On Milpus Street.
I just pick Annapamoo because I, because I drive that also, and a lot of kids around it, but I would assume a lot of kids coming in down on Correo, going into the Correo entrance of Santa Barbara High, and I know there are a lot of kids, no, I'm not sure, I don't know the geography and just exactly what their transit patterns are, but.
Any other board member comments?
Well, I was just going to agree that since they specifically prohibit dispensaries on, on a parcel fronting a state, fronting on State Street between Cabrillo Boulevard and Ariaga Street, it seems that it's, it would seem permissible to prohibit dispensaries fronting onto Milpus Street between, I would go from Annapamoo to.
It might make sense, but the two that we have, one that, on the 21st of August that they recently approved, at 500 North Milpus, that is literally right across the street from Jack in the Box.
Yeah, yeah.
Many of our kids go during lunch.
It has been pointed out to me.
Right.
So, I, firstly, I think they would probably be grandfathered in, the ones that are, already exist, but it certainly seems like we could ask to prohibit any additional ones.
So what exactly would be your language on this? Prohibit?
Well, I would include it under C of their, section of their ordinance on page five of the ordinance.
Right, but we would want to put an E.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
An E on our recommendation list, and that would be to prohibit.
So prohibit additional dispensaries on any parcel fronting onto Milpus Street, and I'd just leave it at that because I'd go the full length of Milpus Street.
Ms. Cordero, there's a little.
Yes, Dr. Noel?
There's a little jog here, I don't know how far off Milpus that goes there, you see that little rectangle right below Santa Barbara Junior? It's almost like it goes in a half a block or a short block. I would say almost, I would agree with you wholeheartedly, you know, maybe the whole Milpus corridor, we would like to see cleaned.
Well, that's essentially prohibit additional dispensaries fronting on Milpus Street, and I would like to add the clarifying language just because of heavy student traffic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, kids, what, kids who live, I'm sorry, kids who live on the, the other side of State Street, the west side of State Street, they, what corridors they take, is there not a lot of traffic to the bus center? Didn't we learn that in some of our previous considerations?
Most of the bus center traffic comes in by bus to the center.
Yeah. Is the center in a permissible zone here?
I believe it is.
Well, then I'd like to see, I'd like to see a substantial area around the center, it ought to be, ought to be free of those dispensaries as well, kids congregate there.
Where would you put that? Extended, extend distance from district school boundaries, including children's center from 500 feet to 1,000 feet, maybe it should be under, F? Prohibit, Dr. Noel, what's your language?
What about, does Monroe still have its homework center down on the, around the curve of the State, of the freeway?
It's at one of the childcare.
Yes.
Centers.
Would that be covered under that?
Yeah, it's at the childcare center.
What would be the proposed language on F, which would be.
Would you like to propose language?
Around the MTD, prohibit dispensaries within 1,000 feet of.
We've got 1,000 feet of any bus stop, I guess it's really covered up by that.
Well, actually, we, that's simply requiring district notification, so that's, but it's required, now we've changed it to require district notification when an application is being processed, period.
Trying to picture how far a thousand feet is.
It's about, it's about two blocks?
The center of Santa Barbara Junior High to Milpus. Look at that street.
It's the distance from Santa Barbara Junior High to the new dispensary.
Yeah.
That's it.
Well, I'd go up to 1,000 meters myself, but.
So, I would propose an F that says prohibit dispensaries within.
Two, at least two blocks from the Transit Center.
Well, let's make it 1,000 feet to be consistent.
Yeah, okay.
Within 1,000 feet of the MTD Transit Center. All right, can we have a motion to urge the city of Santa Barbara?
We're not even looking up, up in the northern part yet.
As it stands, there are some on, near McKenzie Park that are, I think that probably are within 1,000 feet of Peabody.
There actually is one in McKenzie that has been grandfathered that will probably not conform by 2011, because they grandfathered him for a short period to come.
Madam President, I don't think we should be silent even if it's grandfathered in, I mean, we're expressing our view in behalf of the children of the community and.
I think what Mr. Andrews is trying to say is that it's temporarily still legal, but it's going to be out of conformity and then will be closed because it's too close to a park, actually, they're not allowed to be this close to a park. So can we have a motion to urge the city of Santa Barbara to further restrict these medical marijuana based on our revised list?
I'll sort of move.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Apparently there was comment on that.
Oh, E3?
So on E3, we had comment on E3?
Yeah.
On the medical marijuana dispensary?
What side he comes down on?
Thank you for trying to get it to us, Mr. Wheeler.
That's all right, simply a point of clarification, the child development programs are, in our definition, as the president of the teachers association, are considered schools. Dr. Noel correctly pointed out that Monroe does conduct a homework center at La Florida's preschool on Tuesday and Thursday evenings, and I would encourage you to consider those as educational facilities that would fall under the guidelines of this piece of legislation, so just a point of clarification, thank you.
Thank you. We are now moving on to item E4, approval to continue the special education parent resource position for the 0910 school year.
Robyn Swaskin will introduce. Robyn Swaskin will introduce this.
Okay, at, I believe it was last board meeting, we looked at part of the thick mat report and pulled out certain items that we felt were very important to move forward on prior to the workforce group that you approved going forward and, and looking at the thick mat report and designing a plan. One of those was approval to continue the special education parent resource position as the school year starts. And Dr. Carol Miller, Carol Miller, our interim administrator, is here to do this item with you presented.
I'll be very brief. We've had several requests to bring this item back for reconsideration. This would be a continuation of the special education parent resource position for the 2009-10 school year only. And we are looking at alternative delivery systems, you know, we may be looking at splitting the position. We need to look at this, but we need to move forward with the position.
All right, we do have public comment on this item, so let's go ahead and take that.
Mrs. Bream?
I jiggle the whole way up. Hi. It's short. I think we need the position, but we need it to be more dynamic than it was. It can be such a great way to service people that have no idea how to work through the system, people that don't know the laws. Parents often are unaware, matter of fact, I had a patient today, I won't bring up her name, but she was really interesting because she's having issues. And she brought the daughter in for a visual evaluation, obviously. And she's really got major problems, but the district isn't doing anything. It's not your district, by the way. So it was interesting that she didn't even know where to start, what to say, or how to do it. And she's asked for an IEP and they haven't brought it forward. So after just a few minutes, I was able to help her. And someone like that in a district position could really alleviate a lot of stress, tension, and problems, because the laws are there for a reason. Hopefully, you guys are trying to do what's right, which would mean do the assessments and work through the system. And if that person knew those laws and knew how to work things and knew people that were involved, key players in our district, they could maybe get something done without really disrupting anyone's day. They could just call the right person and get it organized and, and done. And that key person is what's important. I, I just don't feel that it was dynamic enough prior. And if it's the same person, I, I would stand against the position. If it's a different scenario, I would love to see that. I thought also the position needed more supervision from above. And with Carol Miller and our new executive director, that probably will happen. But I just want to say that it needs to be different and better, and it's very valuable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Board members? Dr. Noel?
Can I actually say 15,000? Do you want to remind us what we're paying for the, how many hours and how?
I believe it's three days a week, approximately. I mean, the person who was in the position went to night meetings when possible, different times. But it was about six hours, three days a week.
Correct.
And is the same person continuing?
We haven't made that determination yet.
And so how much an hour would be?
I think it's 15 dollars.
Nineteen dollars.
Nineteen dollars an hour, thank you.
And that, that rate is enough to attract appropriate people, Dr. Robertson?
We worked with the business office and looking at that rate.
Mr. Heron?
Is this, is this like on a schedule with Stepford College, I think?
No, it's not at this point. It hasn't, it's not a classified position, it's not a certificated position, it's not an employment agreement.
I would, I would like to raise that limit. And just not that guarantees we're gonna do it, but it gives flexibility. Person gets a better job, it can be competitive and so on. That's, that's not a lot of money.
Mr. Heron?
How many applications did we have hired the, the person that did the job last year?
I only recall seeing three, but there could have been more. I didn't screen them all.
Mr. Heron?
Is the job description staying the same from the, from last year? We're just talking about extending it now from June 30th, when it ended, through the next school year?
Correct. We, we are looking at specific areas or accomplishments that were done this last year to see how we can make those more dynamic and more appropriate for us. So we are looking at different scenarios.
Yes, I would hope under the definition and examples of duties and abilities that we would look for somebody to, to do those things.
Any other board member comments? Mrs. Deacon?
I have a question. Would, the way that the, the position might be envisioned, would that be something that the stakeholders group would be discussing as part of their charge?
That could be part, but we wanted, we wanted approval from this group that we did have the position.
Right. And, and I completely understand the need to move on the funding. And I'm just trying to envision how the, you know, we're talking about possibly changing how the position looks, where those decisions would come from.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cordero?
The, is the 15,000 what we currently, is that, that's basically the current, okay.
Yes.
Because I have a concern about changing it without evaluating it first to see how it's worked at this level. And what, if we did want to increase the amount, what would likely be, what we could expect to see as a difference in order to get the higher amount. So at this point, I think I would be willing to approve continuing it at the same level and ask then for some sort of an evaluation process or report on the, you know, efficiency or efficacy of the position before making additional expenditures.
Dr. Noel?
Well, I just, I was gonna point out that, and, and ask, I mean, this is a stimulus, these are stimulus funds, right? One time only?
Correct.
And that, that fits a short-term position like this. Yeah, and, and Mrs. Cordero, my proposal was not to vote to give, to give a raise to the position, but to vote to give, raise the capital, so there's flexibility for the administration to-
Although for, this is not anything that would be upfront, so we could always ask for more flexibility if you felt that we needed more flexibility later.
Correct.
All right, is there a motion?
Well, I move to adopt it, and I'm, at, at 17,000.
Yes.
A cap, cap of 17.
Is there a second for changing the cap from 15 to 17,000? Motion dies, you're gonna second it?
I was gonna second it, yeah.
Okay, it's seconded?
Yeah, mine was a motion to adopt, not to amend.
Motion to adopt an, a motion to approve, to continue the special education parent resource position with a raised cap of $17,000.
Yes, that's my motion.
Any other discussion on it?
As long as that doesn't change any of the parameters on the position description.
That would be my understanding in making the motion.
Just simply making more money available to it. All right, all those in favor? Aye, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item E5, public hearing on and approval of resolution number 0910-07 regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for Cleveland Elementary School and Santa Barbara Community Academy.
And Michael Gonzalez, our Director of Student Services and Compliance, will make this presentation.
Thank you very much. We are annually required by the California Education Code to review our schools and make sure that our students are provided with State Board of Education-approved materials in the subject areas that include reading language arts, English language development, math, history, social science, and science. We're required to do so before the end of the eighth week. Traditionally, in our district, we have lumped all of our schools together, and we do it at the eighth week of when the bulk of our elementary schools reach their eighth week. We were notified that because we have two year-round schools, that we must treat them differently, i.e. we must make sure we're in compliance with the eighth week. That's why we're bringing this item to you this evening. We have reviewed Cleveland's instructional program and the Santa Barbara Community Academy's instructional program. And we have determined that there are sufficient copies of State Board of Education-approved materials. The list of the materials that are currently used is attached to the board agenda. We are asking that the board approve the resolution 09/10-07 that would find that we have a sufficiency of instruction materials at Cleveland and the Santa Barbara Community Academy for the year 2009-10.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that the board adopt resolution 09/10-07 stating that there is sufficiency of instructional materials for Cleveland School and the Santa Barbara Community Academy for the school year 2009-2010.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
On to E6, approval of Santa Barbara School District sunshine proposal to negotiate with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association for the 10-11 school year.
And Dr. Robertson, our Director of Personnel, will make this presentation.
Thank you and good evening. After discussion with you, and in accordance with the collective bargaining laws, I am bringing forward a sunshine proposal with the intent to bargain for the 2010-11 school year. Although the request to negotiate for 2010-11 is rather early, it is necessary that we begin our discussions now if we want to implement anything within the 2010-2011 school year. Given the state fiscal crisis and our ongoing concerns with budget, we need to be talking about those things now. Some, the proposed negotiated items or conditions will fall under the following articles. Article four, wages. Article six, hours and conditions, which cover work year and calendar. And article 10, class size. It is recommended that the district authorize the lead labor negotiator to move forward and negotiate under the terms and conditions noted above with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association for the 2010-11 school year.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Dr. Noel?
I think that we're not following the procedures prescribed by law if we vote on this. And I'm gonna read the, this is the government code 3540, that's in the TEC. Meeting and negotiating shall not take place on any proposal until a reasonable time has elapsed after the submission of a proposal to, to enable the public to become informed. And the public has the opportunity to express itself regarding the proposal at a meeting of the public employer, school employer. After the public has had an opportunity to express itself, the public school employers shall, at a meeting which is open to the public, adopt this initial proposal. And I, and I, my interpretation of this is that for us to air this now and vote on it now does not offer the public a reasonable time to, to have understood what's going on and to express its opinion. And it goes on to say, I should add, I thought there was something missing here. The intent of this section, namely, it is that the public should be informed of the issues that are being negotiated upon and have full opportunity to express, express their views on the issues to the school, the public school employer, and to know the positions of their elected representatives.
Thank you, Dr. Noel, and I'm sure Mr. Price would love to chime in on that in a moment. I was gonna say something about text messaging, but I'm not going to. I know you're not, Mr. Price.
Ask Meg and Dave are my witnesses. Actually, Dr. Noel's quote was exactly correct. The most pertinent one, though, is 3547A that says all initial proposals of exclusive representatives and of public school employers, which are within the scope of representation, shall be presented at a public meeting. And then thereafter, the public has a right to comment on it. It doesn't exactly answer Dr. Noel's concern to say that it is, as far as I know, the same procedure that's followed in nearly 1,000 other school districts around the state as this district has done for years. That is the same procedure that's followed in special districts and that is followed in, with, which are governed by other laws. It has never been challenged to take this abbreviated position. It is intended, as I understand it, to allow discussions to ensue at the bargaining table in a generalized manner as opposed to coming forth and saying, well, we're gonna offer zero salary or minus 1% or plus 1% or whatever it is. And I would also add, and, you know, I, I can't tell you whether or not if somebody somewhere challenged the substantiveness of these proposals, that a court may not agree with Dr. Noel. It's never happened, to my knowledge. But certainly, if any members of the public felt that they were aggrieved by not having the information concerning the specifics of what was gonna be talked about, they could come forward and take that position, which could then result in the board requiring greater specifics, greater elaboration before going to the bargaining table. But it's never happened here, and it's never happened anywhere, to my knowledge. So, you know, within the field of labor law, this is consistent with how it's done all over. And there's no precedent to indicate that it is not acceptable. Although I would say that, hearing from Dr. Noel, the same thing again tonight, that has been shared in previous years, I, I understand and appreciate the position that he's taking.
Thank you, Mr. Price. And I just want to clarify, because it, it sounds like there's more detail here than there, than there is in, just in our conversation. And what is being presented to us are the three areas of negotiation. There are, there is no substance to any of the three areas. It's simply wages, hours, conditions, work year and calendar, and class size. Those are the three areas that will then, so I, for me, I think when I hear the code talking about initial proposals, that's something a little bit more specific than that we're gonna talk about this general area and that general area. And, and so that's where I think perhaps it's being a little bit too concentrating on, on details that aren't there yet when we say that it's not appropriate to talk about this. Mrs. Deacon?
Well, and, and I guess I, my feeling would be in complying certainly with the spirit of the law, that merely the presentation of these is getting the information to the public so that if they do have concerns about these specific categories, they, they certainly have the opportunity to come and address these.
All right, any other comments?
Well, I would just agree, because I think now at this point, the public has pretty much as much information as we do. They know the categories that are gonna be discussed, and that's what we know, and there's no proposal yet. So I will move that the district authorize the lead labor negotiator to move forward with the, and negotiate on the above-mentioned items with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association for the 2010-2011 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment, Mr. Heron?
One question, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate here or not, but obviously, there's a lot of talk right now about making changes in how our system operates at the state level, the president, you know, at the national level. They're saying we're not gonna get funds unless California does something regarding teacher evaluation. If the government does something, if the state does something in the next month, that changes how we can evaluate- changes how we can evaluate teachers, is that something that needs to be added into the bargaining for 2010-2011?
A possibility, and one can always request that new items be brought forward during negotiations.
So, this doesn't preclude us from doing anything in that category?
It doesn't preclude us, as long as each side gives permission to add another item.
My understanding, though, in the current conversation at the federal and state level is that those are in these categories.
In these categories? Good, thank you.
Any other comments, Dr. Noel?
I just have to make a comment. That was the most amazing legal opinion I think I've ever heard, and I remain unpersuaded by it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
The motion carries for one. At this point, we're running about 45 minutes late. We need to go ahead and take our break now. I will pull item F7. Mr. Smith, I know that will make you sad, which is the update on implementation of parent pay transportation. But when we return, we will continue with the agenda. I will ask that we bring item F5 up in front of item F4. Okay? And we'll go ahead and just take a 10-minute break. Mr. Smith, if you could make a notice for 10 minutes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Michael. There we go.
I will share with you that you have seen attached to the board agenda a copy of the ELAC manual that a subcommittee of the DLEC committee worked out. There is a minor revision that we'll be making in the document. Please know that the principals have been given copies, and the expectation is that they will follow the guide to their best ability to make sure that our ELACs are functioning. Without further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Salvador Guareña, who is the, who was the vice president of the DLEC this past year. So?
Madam Chair, and members of the school board, I'd like to present our DLEC report and also close with a few brief comments of my own. Our president of DLEC was not able to be here with us tonight, so I'm going to present the report on his behalf, on the behalf of DLEC. In order to ensure that the parents of English learners and community members participate in the development, implementation, and evaluation of district programs and services for English learners, and that district programs for English learners comply with state and federal legal requirements, the District English Learner Advisory Committee is charged with issuing a report to the board that advises the board on a number of topics. And those topics are listed on the cover sheet, or the cover sheet to the attachment, which is the ELAC training manual. But I will, I will continue with the, describing some of the results of our work this past year. And in response to information gathered from parents, from school staff, school administrators, and members of the English Learner Advisory Committees through interviews and observations, it became apparent that a major concern on the part of many English Learner Advisory Committees was the lack of consistency and the implementation and operation of English Learner Advisory Committees throughout the districts. In response to this concern, DLEC formed a special subcommittee that began to study how best to assist schools in the establishment of an effective and compliant English Learner Advisory Committee. And the result was the production of an English Learner Advisory Committee Training Manual in English and Spanish designed to provide uniform guidance to parents, school administrators, and staff about the role, the functions, the organization, and implementation of the English Learner Advisory Committees throughout the Santa Barbara school districts. The English Learner Advisory Committee Manual was written by the 2002, 2008, 2009 District DLEC Committee, has been distributed to each of the principals. DLEC will work with district and school staff and other parent training and advocacy groups, such as United Parents Padres Unidos, to establish a training program to assist parents and school administrators and staff in the use of the manual. We remain convinced that only by working together, parents, teachers, and school administrators, can the proficiencies of English learners and the reclassification rates be accelerated. It's essential to have effective parent involvement in the schools, and so that not only do the parents receive information from the schools, but that the underlying conditions are established at each school so that these English learner parents are truly treated as partners with schools, and that these English Learner Advisory Committees are also known as ELACs so that they can operate as credible advisory bodies to the schools and to school site councils concerning the needs of English learners. It was my privilege to serve as chair and general editor of the ELAC Training Manual Committee, and I'd like to thank the following DLEC members for contributing to this manual: Isabel Adriana Diaz, Guleta Valley Junior High School DLEC Representative; Sergio Galindo Lacumbra, Junior High School DLEC Representative; Salome Lopez, San Marcos High School DLEC Representative; and Katia Rodriguez Mester, Franklin School DLEC Representative. A copy of this, of this manual in English and Spanish is probably one of your thickest attachments to your board materials tonight. And now, there are three closing comments I would like to make. First, it's our hope that the manual will be put to good use in our schools. I credit the committee members, who are all parent volunteers, and they all gave their time to make this possible. And I'd like to also say that this was a resourceful group. We met at Starbucks. We met at the public library. We met at Michael Gonzalez's office here at the headquarters. Ultimately, and most productively, we met at Rusty's Pizza downtown to bring this project to fruition. And committee members at times, they worked late into the night, researching, writing, translating, and editing these texts. It was not an easy task. Our backgrounds were diverse, including Chileno, Chicano, Mexican, and Brazilian, but we forged consensus. Second, this project was about, and it should be, about positive solutions. We saw, we saw that there was an unmet need, and we were resolved to come up with constructive, a constructive way to address that need. One of our goals was to systematize the way that the parents of English learners get informed, that they get engaged, and they get involved in their schools. And it's an important mechanism, the ELACs, and, and we hope that school administrators will find the manual to be useful, valuable help in that process. Third, and last, our ultimate goal is to help increase student academic achievement. Again, we need to work together, the DLEC, the ELACs, the school board, and the schools, in collaboration with parent groups such as United Parents Padres Unidos, community groups such as Just Communities of the Central Coast, and in this way, we can continue forging positive working partnerships to help our English learners on their way towards English proficiency. So, thank you for providing this opportunity to the parents to be part of the solution, and thanks to Mr. Michael Gonzalez for providing support and guidance that we needed to make it happen. There are two DLEC members attending tonight, and I'd like to ask them to stand and be recognized. The first is Sylvia Cruz, DLEC Representative from Santa Barbara Community Academy, and Katia Rodriguez Mester, DLEC Representative from Franklin School. Thank you all very much, and good night.
President Parker, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We consider this a valuable resource, and Michael will address how we're using it at our sites. And I would also like to thank our District English Learner Advisory Committee members for all the time and energy they put into this. Thank you, Mr. Guareña, and the other members of DLEC.
Well, Mr. Guareña, don't leave just yet, because I, I'm so impressed with this work. It's a pleasure to have you here tonight. It's a nice surprise to see you. But your committee, boy, they put together something that's so good that I look at it and go, "Wow, maybe we could have them work on other manuals for the district." So, thank you, thank you. I think this is going to be a tremendous resource.
Fantastic.
We do have public comment on this, and I think that Mr. Gonzalez might want to follow up a little bit, and maybe other board members have comments, too, but maybe we'll take the public comment first.
Joan Stuster?
My name is Joan Stuster, and I decided to make a statement tonight as a member, board member of United Parents Padres Unidos. First, I want to thank the participating DLEC members for their many hours of work in the development of the English Learner Advisory Committee Manual. I also want to thank Michael Gonzalez, District Director of Student Services and Compliance, for facilitating this process. As a teacher and also a parent in the district, I am really impressed with the usefulness of this manual. The fact that a group of busy DLEC parents took so much time to work in partnership with the school district, to assist in bringing our school ELAC committees into compliance with state regulations, demonstrates a commitment on the part of the parents to become more involved in their children's education. With greater understanding of the education system and greater participation from the families of second language learners, we can be more successful in closing the achievement gap among our students. Rather than structure ELAC meetings that only inform parents, it is the hope that through training, school staff will work with ELAC officers and members and address together the four main functions of English language advisory committees. In this way, we can promote parent leadership and ELAC, and support the development of true parent leadership among the families of our English learners. As one who has served on school site and district committees for over 15 years, I have benefited in advocating for my own children from the information that I have learned from other parents, from the principals, from district administrators, and from school board members. I am excited by the potential use of the ELAC manual in training and empowering a greater number of parents to become more involved in their children's education, and to be confident enough to speak about the positive aspects of their children's school experiences, and also share the challenges of being second language learners. In this way, we can learn from one another and create a stronger educational program for all students. Recently, Dr. Duran, a national expert regarding the education of Latinos who is at UCSB, communicated with Sal Guareño, Padres Unidos Board Member and Chair of the ELAC Manual's editorial team.
Thirty seconds.
He wrote, "Developing functional parent leadership is a challenging matter, as it is important to allow parents to express their needs and interests in their own voice and with their own leadership dynamics, and this can be a developmental process that won't just happen all of a sudden. I chose to speak tonight because many hours have been devoted to this project, and I'd like to stress the importance of the next steps in the process of creating strong ELACs in our school district. Training and respecting each school's unique culture will be critical in the success of this effort. Over the years, I have seen many good ideas die on the vine..."
Can you wrap it up?
"...due to the overwhelming workload and pressures faced by administrators and school staff. But the time is right for this project, and the positive potential for academic achievement makes it an important project. So, I hope we can work together. Thank you."
And Mr. Gonzalez, did you want to follow up with how it's?
I think I will simply share that our last speaker outlined the next steps. We now work with our principals, with their designees, and with parents to make sure that those guides are understood. I use the word "guide" because no one plan fits all, but this is a very good model for how a group of parents at a particular school site whose children are enrolled in the English learner program can work with their administrator and the school site council to raise student achievement. And so, that will be the next steps. We'll be working with groups like Padres Unidos enlace to formulate a, a staff development program for school administrators, teachers who are involved, as well as parents.
Thank you. All right. We now move on to item F3, Report on Special Education Progress on FICMAT Recommendations.
And Dr. Miller, Carol Miller, will introduce this. Thank you.
Good evening, President Parker, board members, staff, and the community. On August 11th, the board approved to convene a representative stakeholders group to review the categories of recommendations for FICMAT, consolidate any duplicates, identify responsible entities for implementation, and that the self, the stakeholders self-select their own members. I truly appreciate the support and efforts of the different groups in assisting with this selection process for the members of the FICMAT stakeholders work group. On August 17th, I sent a letter to lead persons, along with follow-up calls, to facilitate the selection of our participants. My deadline for the submission of names was very energetic, and I had several groups ask me if we could extend that deadline. So, the new deadline for the submission of names is Friday, September 4th, and we're planning to have the following representation. Several board members, parents across different disability categories and across elementary and secondary levels, district office from fiscal personnel and special education, principal from the elementary and secondary level, special education providers from both the elementary and secondary, that would be teachers from general and special education, as well as instructional aides from both elementary and secondary, a psychologist, a nurse, speech pathologist, and a district language advisory committee, as well as the SELPA, Special Education Local Plan Area. And we've asked each of the groups to please be mindful of the representation from our Spanish-speaking community when identifying their participants. We will have a full-day stakeholders meeting in mid-September, and at that time, the work group members will be reviewing the 153 recommendations by the 16 cluster areas, and we will use an experienced facilitator to assist us. I received a number of emails and phone calls from parents, communities, members, teachers, and administrators, sharing their interest in being a part of the work group, or willingness to help out in other capacities. I responded to each of those persons for thank you for sharing interest, and forwarded that information of interest to those persons or the appropriate lead for the entities or the groups for possible selection. We will also be providing opportunities for public input after the work group develops a draft plan, so we can have some information and response from our community members. Furthermore, Debbie Reith has been invited from, and she is our representative from the Special Education Department. She's a consultant, and she will be visiting our district on September 15th to provide us technical support. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I don't know if there's any board comment on this at this time. If we can be brief, because I need to move on to the next item. Mrs. Cordero?
I was just going to ask or recommend, depending on what the answer is, that the facilitator that you have for that initial meeting be bilingual.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Thank you.
And Dr. Noel, again, briefly?
Do you, could you describe how the choices are going to be made as to who participates?
And at this point, I'm going to have us hold off on this question, and we'll come back to item F3, because we need to get to item F4, because Dr. Caprito needs to leave.
Okay.
So, Dr. Miller, if you'll come back up right after item F4.
Thank you very much.
So, Dr. Caprito, Report on Vandalism Response at Santa Barbara High School.
And Bud Anderson will make this point. Or Bud, are you going to introduce this? Sir, make the presentation.
I'll introduce it, and Dr. Caprito votes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And so, as probably most of the board knows, if not everyone, that we had a lot of issues with regards to vandalism at Santa Barbara High last year. It's important, certainly to me, that it's not interpreted as a safety issue, but it certainly impacts a, an environment conducive to learning. Between myself and Mr. Gonzalez and Dr. Caprito, we've come up with some ideas as to how that might be addressed, and I'll leave that to Dr. Caprito to discuss with you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Over the past year, this is, was, is my third year here, and what I noticed last year over any other year, and probably in any other school, the amount of vandalism that occurred at Santa Barbara High School last year was phenomenal. And it wasn't, it wasn't small stuff, and there were a lot of thefts, and there were lots and lots of graffiti, broken windows, items stolen out of class... graffiti, broken windows, items stolen out of classrooms, and just an ordinary amount of things. And in my opinion, quite unusual. I just haven't seen anything like that. And I have a real concern, not just because of the campus is pretty complex, it's sort of like the Winchester House in today's era, you know? Because there's lots of openings places, and it's an unbelievable place to try to lock up if you're in any part of the old facility. And we have doors really that, you know, if you shake them long enough, they open, or they might even open on their own. And if you see windows that look like they're closed, oftentimes because of the age of the facility, they're not really closed at all, they're not locked, they're just closed from the outside. So I think we have, you know, several issues that we need to address. You know, short of, you know, completely remodeling, and I know they've been doing that for about 100 years now, and of course, we have that big hole, which is creating a bit of a controversy, there's a lot of stuff to do there. And we really have come up with a plan. It's not rocket science, but we need people, and we need people in particular places. But what we did, Bud Andrews and I came up with a couple of things. We visited on several occasions actually and came up with some things that we thought would do well. But among the real issues that we've had, and I don't know if you've had a chance to read this, and I don't want to go over all of it, but there is quite a bit, and it stems from everything from the night all the way through, you know, again to the night, all day long, just because of the entrances and exits of the campus. People come and go in that facility all the time, it's just not a secure place. So recognizing that, you can see the A through D list that we have, campus safety assistance, dedicated resource officer, increased staff awareness, and the tracking, greater tracking of the vandalism. But I can share with you just generally, when I pull up the front of the school and it's completely marked up on the front, it's unbelievable because the place was painted only a year ago. And we spent the morning painting, just trying to get it back to some reasonable shape before kids get there. And I get there just about 6:30 in the morning, and then I get on the phone with Ramon and we start, you know, doing all the painting and doing what we can do to get the marking off. It can be very challenging. So a couple of things, you know, immediate needs that we see is if we had the stuff there, and I know we have to buy it, but then, you know, we have to be able just to put it on quickly and then have the painters come over and finish it up. But short of that, it would be nice to have somebody there, we're trying to create a plan where we can have somebody there at least over the night. And I've been trying to do some research on what the cost estimate of that, you know, we can get guys for $20 or $30 an hour to come and do that, but they have to be there all night. It's truly a great deterrent. Somebody walking around the flashlight can really do a lot of good things, and I've had this in other schools where I've been, and it really cuts it down significantly. But at this school, if you walk around the campus, again, there's a lot of little nooks and crannies that do get vandalized. So for your consideration, I'd just like you to look at what we have. The safety assistance, you know, you can see that we had some difficulty. We have three now, two of them are new. We've had a high rate of turnover, we've had some problems, work-related issues, those kinds of things. We think we're moving in the right direction with two new ones out of the four, but we still only have three. We're looking at a resource officer, which is, I spent some time with Bud and with Michael Gonzalez, trying to figure out a way to manipulate the existing funds that we have, and I'm finding out that it's not entirely possible with the union contracts and everything to try to manipulate that last, that last safety person that we need to convert those dollars and cents into a resource officer and have somebody there and can run three. So short of that, I'm looking at trying to find a resource officer who's retired, who would be willing to work for the dollars and cents that we have, and just come in and be able to at least have that experience on the campus on an eight-hour day and help everybody else, so at least they know what to look for. It's the evenings and the weekends that I'm really worried about. We talked about cameras, we've talked about other types of security, people are our best bet. So right now, we're just in the process of trying to figure out how this is going to work. So I guess what I have for you is this document, and then hopefully you have some questions or if anything I can clarify for you, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Caprito. Board Members, Mrs. Deacon?
Well, first of all, I was really, really happy to see this on the agenda this evening because I know it's an issue that I think everyone is concerned about, aware of it. I mean, the last time I visited your campus, it was tagged while I was there in the middle of the day, and I know you have to deal with this all the time, but I guess I am concerned about the funding because our other two high schools have these resource officers that you're unable to have because we contract with the city. Is that right? Is that why the funding is not available?
We don't contract this with the city. The city provides a resource officer, just as the county provides sheriff deputies for resource officers.
So the city has just been unable to?
Well, we have a, we don't have a dedicated resource officer. Let me see if I can rephrase it. There is not a dedicated officer there. And the one that we've had has been out since April, he had surgery, so he's been out since the last part of the school year and he hasn't been back since. So it's been a little difficult, a little challenging. We know the difference, and I think there's been a swing probably in the last 15 years from having an officer on campus. 15 years ago, nobody wanted an officer. Today, you're begging for one. So things have changed a lot.
Well, I certainly hope that we find some creative ways to help you find the funding to do this because I think it's really important.
Thank you.
Other comments? Dr. Noel?
I want to understand, two campus safety officers stole things from the school?
Well, I'm going to tell you that one has been, one has been charged with stealing, one was not charged but was arrested and subsequently released. The answer is partially correct, the answer is yeah, we're basically beating up ourselves. That was a problem.
I just, I have to ask, I mean, how did we hire people? What kind of character judgments are we making when we're hiring people who then turn around, who in uniform, I guess it's a t-shirt, but a uniform, turn around and rip off the schools? This is astounding.
Yeah. We're not in disagreement.
Are we going to do something about improving our recruitment procedures and vetting these people?
We already have.
We have. Could you tell us what?
Chris, would you like to address that?
I would like to have Elaine address some of this because of the classified personnel that we're dealing with, and she has been working with this particular situation, as I have with Mark on some of the issues that he has presented. But we have put a number of things in place and we have recruited and interviewed as many people as possible trying to find the right fits for our school. And it is difficult to find some really qualified individuals. We have a large concern as well that our, the resource officers that used to be and that I was privileged to have at Santa Barbara High School when I was the principal there has not been in attendance or visible as they have been in the past. And I do think that is part of a reason why there's more activity on campus, because once they were visible and seen, it was a real detriment. And that police officer or resource officer knew every one of those students and just was really difficult. We've not been able to get that from the city. They've been shorthanded as well, and they've been pulled off their officer who's now been out on three different surgeries, I believe, and has not been back on campus for at least a year. So we've been working with Mr. Caprito on trying to adjust the campus safety, staff, move some people around, deal with some of the issues that he has referred to, which we have done by the book, by the contract, and gone through all of our steps and processes. You want to address the recruitment?
I just want to assure the Board that we do have a very stringent recruitment and interview process and pre-employment verification. All of our employees can are fingerprinted, and those are received and the results are by us and personnel before the final offer is made and before they're placed on campus. This is a situation that was unfortunate, that someone who has, I don't want to go into all the details, but certainly was cleared for employment. And they were working with us, and we had an issue that came up with the equipment onsite. We dealt with that through the disciplinary process. So I just want to assure the Board that we do follow that, we are looking at reference checking. Unfortunately, sometimes this occurs when we have employees that make poor judgment, but otherwise, we deal with that immediately and effectively in a disciplinary manner.
Well, before we go on, I also want to remind the Board that we did increase the salary range on this so that we could attract more capable people in. We have increased the trainings significantly, and we've reexamined our hiring, our actually higher, actual hiring and selection process.
Dr. Noel?
Yes, I remember that discussion, the last time we talked about it, and I raised the question about how much we pay. What are we paying now?
Oh, my gosh. Elaine, can you tell us how much we pay on an hourly basis now?
Hourly basis, it varies, but the average is about 15, 50 an hour to about 16, 25 an hour.
And the training, how much training are we giving them?
Well, this past year particularly, through Mr. Andrews, we had 24 hours of training to all of the campus safety assistants from all three high schools and junior highs.
You know, there's another whole model for this, and it's in the education code that envisions a security officer and a security officer reserve corps, you know, people like families, you know, parents, things like that. And they have, in that, they require certain training that's not given locally, but that the person have this training. It's not post-training, but it's something of that kind. And I bring this up because, the last time we talked about it and now, I feel that we really should be taking steps to kind of professionalize the campus safety assistance or by any title. And I don't know that you can recruit professionals for 15 bucks an hour and expect them to be trained. I visited a school down in Santa Ana, a high school in Santa Ana, I think Mrs. Parker's been there as well, and it's, you know, it's a pretty dangerous part of California, they have major problems. And they had, they had three uniformed security people, and one was just at the gate, you couldn't get in. And I talked with the guy for a while, and they, and in fact, I recall, I called the district office, they pay these people about $21 an hour, and I said, "Can you keep people?" Because these were not kids, these were mature adults. And they said, "Yeah, we have one person that's gone on 23 years in that job." That starts to sound pretty good to me. They also told me that, I said, "How does it work with the uniform?" They said, "The uniform is very important." And it was not a policeman's uniform, it was some other kind of uniform, but the uniform kind of gives the symbolic presence there, and their view is very important. So all of which it comes down to that, I would like to see us look at this as something we want to move towards more professional. People pay the money, Lord knows, we're losing the money now. It's inconceivable that, you know, I mean, that we should have our officers of authority turn into thieves or be thieves is just beyond belief. And I think we need to, the professionalization might be a step in the right direction. Pay them more money.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. Any other board comments here? I want to chime in really quickly, just that I appreciate this list coming forward and I appreciate what my colleagues have said so far. I really think that we need to be talking as a district about the security of our sites, the physical security of our sites. Santa Barbara, you're sort of the ground zero at this point of, in terms of vandalism, but there are so many worse things that could be happening. And most of our schools are not secure. Santa Barbara High is really, really not secure. I think that we need to be having a discussion about limiting, ways to limit the number of entrances and exits to Santa Barbara High School. And that's true for almost all of our schools, too. So I think that's an important discussion that we can't put off for too much longer. And Dr. Sarvis, you wanted to chime in?
Well, I just wanted to comment. I like, I like the whole gist of that, moving to a more professional staff, with the caveat that a number of school districts have gone to their own police forces. And one huge problem in doing so is that they have found that all the other adults on campus say, "This is not my responsibility, there's a police officer here." And you take the 180 other adults on a high school campus and have them step back from that responsibility for ensuring student conduct and, you know, all the important things that go on in a school campus, is a real danger. So I want us to be careful about how far we go and just how we portray these people.
Mrs. Deacon?
I just want to add one quick thing, and I think we really need to focus on this nighttime piece, which I know that you reinforced, because we can do a lot of great things during the day with the staff we have, but it's the nighttime piece we don't really have right now, and I think we know that much of the vandalism happens at night, and securing the campuses would go a long way to help that as well.
Dr. Noel?
Yeah, let me just read, this is Education Code 3502.1.5. The governing board of a school district may establish a school police or security officer reserve corps, this is what I find most intriguing, to supplement a police department or a security department pursuant to Education Code 38,000. Any person deputized by a school district as a school reserve officer shall complete the training prescribed by Penal Code 8332, or 832, whatever that is, last paragraph. It is the intent of the legislature to allow school districts to use volunteer police reserve or security reserve officers to the extent necessary to provide a safe and secure environment. And when you read, you have to have the security officer before you do this, then you read that they also have extension off-campus. And I start to get visions of the safe passages idea, trying to, just a presence with a telephone, that kind of thing, and around the campus. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Cordero?
I had a question about one of the items that you have listed here, and I think because there's, I think there's a real distinction between the kind of vandalism that we're seeing at Santa Barbara High School and some of the kinds of security issues that schools in really high crime areas experience that, and so I don't want us to conflate those two. We certainly want to address the issues of the vandalism, and we want to make sure that our campuses are safe, but I don't want to give the impression that we are in the same situation as many schools in large urban inner district or inner-city areas that have huge crime issues. One of the things that you mentioned here that was on your list was site administration plans to provide an outreach to leaders of known or suspected groups responsible for committing the vandalism acts. And to me, that sounded promising. I take that as trying to work with some of these, I'm assuming, young people, but that may be incorrect, to sort of find ways to maybe channel that into some other more constructive way. Have you started that yet? Do you have, have you gotten any further with that, or is that still in the very initial stages?
No, we've, we're just trying to enroll kids today. We're, you know, these are all things that are work in progress. I can share an example of that, just, and I'll do it quickly, of a school in a district in an area where I was, where a particular high school principal did go out and, you know, we know who these people are, we have an idea, we pretty much know who they are. And there are a lot of other people that we know who know who they are. I mean, there's a lot of connections, and this, this community is not different at all. And one of the things that we worked on was getting an outreach to those people responsible for these particular kids, getting them to understand that this, you know, tagging anywhere is not a good thing. But our school wasn't good. And in a couple of different ways, and I won't get into the specifics, we let them know that it was not a very good thing to do because it would lead to other things that weren't real good for the kids that were actually on the campus. And after the removal of a couple of kids, it stopped. And so we would make some phone calls to some, you know, to some people they were ultimately responsible for or to, and they were helping us. So really, we were trying to reach out in that regard. We're not, we're not a place for them to do this, and we really wanted to make it clear. We weren't being mean or ornery, but we wanted to make sure that they understood, this is our school, this is where they were taught, this was the implication. And it only furthered to foster, because the environment wasn't like this where we have a side and a side, these kids were all coming together to one site. And ultimately, we really got it lower down. And it was really a lot of tagging. You know, my concern here is, and I want to make it clear, this is not safety, I really do want to make that clear. This is really about stupid things, this is about vandalism, these are about things that, you know, unfortunately, dollars and cents could help, people could help, visual people, things like this, awareness could help. And I want to make that, you know, real clear with the group because it's a safe place, but we do have strange things that happen.
Thank you. All right, we will go ahead and move back to item F3 if Dr. Miller- If Dr. Miller can come back up. Have a very good night, Dr. Caprito. And Dr. Noel, you had a question for?
Yeah, I, I just want to know how the, the people are being chosen. Right, you mentioned there are going to be board members. How are the board members being, being selected?
I'm glad I had an opportunity to sit back there and figure out my answer. In describing the self-selection process, I'd like to go through each of these and it'll take me just a few minutes. Regarding the certificated staff, which is the general and special education teachers, the speech pathologist and the nurse and the psychologist, Mr. Lane Wheeler, who is the president of our teachers' association, is developing, is developing a criterion with his executive committee and then they're sending it out to all the members. So they have a process in place. Regarding the classified instructional aides, I'm working with Angela Padilla with our CSCE. The district office administrators, we're working through cabinet to identify those, those folks in the fiscal and the, of course, we know the special ed and personnel. Regarding the principals, I announced it at the administrative retreat and asked for volunteers and I got several volunteers, which is exciting. Regarding D-LAC, I'm working through Michael Gonzalez. The parents, the, our special education advisory committee, SEEK, I've worked very closely with them and set up the criteria of parents representing children across disability categories and across elementary and secondary and Spanish speaking. And then we also have some of our associations representing autism and dyslexia and early start. And then also, of course, we included our SLP director. And then last but not least, the board members, we have allocated two representatives for the board members and then you as a group would need to decide who those representatives would be.
Okay.
When will we decide that?
Well, maybe there are simply two volunteers without having to take board action.
I volunteer.
There's Dr. Noel. Is there a second volunteer to go?
Has been so involved in this process.
I have a feeling that Dr. Noel and myself should not be the two. So I, I will bow to one of the other three. If, if, if nobody else volunteers, I will, but it might be better cross-pollination if.
And for me, I'm hesitating and maybe you are as well, Mrs. Cordero, because work has started again. Mrs. Deacon?
I'd be happy to participate.
Thank you. All right, see, we didn't need to take any action on that, isn't that great? All right.
Thank you.
At this point, we will move on to item F five. Report on option one, retirement incentive and discussion on additional compensation for past retirees.
Chris Robertson will make this presentation.
On June twenty-fifth, the district and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association negotiated two retirement incentives that will be funded through the federal stimulus dollars provided strictly for the two thousand nine-ten and two thousand ten-eleven school years. At the close of the deadline, which was August fourteenth, we had sixteen teachers who had submitted retirement letters for option one. This did allow us to rehire some of the employees that we reported earlier, we were able to bring back off of the, to resend. Related to this incentive was a request from nine people who submitted letters of retirement in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Many of these individuals approached the board and or sent letters requesting that a board allow them to be included in the two thousand nine, two thousand ten retirement incentive. Though you've been considering the request seriously, and I know it's been weighing on your minds, you are faced with the following legal liability, which I had printed out for you on the document, but for the audience's purpose out there, the legal counsel has advised us that under section ten subdivision A of Article eleven of the California Constitution, otherwise known as the extra compensation clause, prohibits payment of extra compensation to a public employee after services have been rendered. Furthermore, to provide extra compensation would also be considered a gift of public funds, both of which constitute a violation of the California Constitution. You would not be permitted by law to retroactively offer these benefits. It is unfortunate that the law does restrict us when it comes to the two thousand eight, two thousand nine retirees and the requests that they be included in this incentive. Though the result may seem unfair, it is very risky for the district due to the concern of violating the California Constitution to offer anything else up. And I just present that to you for further discussion. I know some of the individuals are here tonight that would like to address the board.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. We do have public comment on this.
Mary Goslin, followed by Pam Holst, followed by Steve Winger.
Hello again. I'm Mary Goslin. I'm a recently retired science teacher from Santa Barbara Junior High School. I'm here to advocate for the retirees of the Santa Barbara School District who, encouraged by the districts, submitted their notices to retire before July first. We are aware that legal barriers have been identified that may hold the district back from including me and other retirees who submitted their notices early. However, the fact remains that we have been treated unfairly. All of us retired in good faith. We are the small group of teachers who gave our notice in a timely manner as requested. We acted professionally by letting you know we were leaving so that you could prepare. We knew we would be saving teacher jobs, saving many thousands of dollars. We urge you to use exhaustive measures to find a solution to this inequitable treatment of these dedicated teachers who contributed so many years of selfless service. Though our teaching services ended on June fifth, the fact remains that we continue to be very much part of the district's. Many of us still retained our keys as we cleaned and organized our classrooms well into June, even July. We continue to receive our deferred pay through the summer. Our medical insurance coverage runs through September thirtieth. We don't feel finished with the district's. Those who retired after July first finished teaching on the same day we did. Please act in good faith and seek a way to right this wrong. In the name of fairness and equity, please use your thoughtful, creative ingenuity to fully investigate what can be done to correct this injustice. Thank you.
Pam Holst, followed by Steve Winger.
Hi, I'm Pamela Holst. You know me, but, you know, I have just thought and thought and thought about this whole retirement incentive mess. And I understand the legalities involved, but the bottom line is that what happened to those of us who did what was right was wrong. You should not have allowed this to happen to me or to any of us. And I'm speaking for myself now. It, it goes beyond money or health benefits, it's about ethics. I know you don't know me and I know that you will continue your lives and not give my dilemma any more thought, but for me and my family, we will never forget this injustice. The school board, to me, has always been an entity in and of itself, the ultimate decision-maker and always deserving of respect. A somewhat like a judge, I guess. So to be treated this way after so many years, you know, thirty-seven years of loyal service was like a punishment rather than just a disappointment. I really have always respected you guys. Hiding behind a law when you know that a mistake was made is heartless as well as wrong. There's no one, and I mean no one, that has not said, but that's not fair to me. And I've, I told you before, I have been on recess duty for thirty-seven years and I know what is fair play. I've negotiated enough between kids and so everybody ends up in a win-win situation. Our school district is not some cutthroat mortgage company. We're all concerned about educating children not only to know their three Rs, but to be honest and ethical members of society, just as it says in that mission statement. Right behind you, Robin. In my heart of hearts, I know that you never intended to hurt us. And I also know for me, retirement was difficult and that has made me super sensitive, but there has to be some way to make this right. Some sort of special circumstance, some compromise. Your combined knowledge is far greater and more creative than mine. Stimulus package aside, the district has a lot of money, has made a lot of money off of our retirement. I'll gladly go back to teaching and retire later if there's a way around this. Just please don't let this problem expire without your serious consideration. Just please try to make it right for us. Thank you very much for listening to me. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Steve Winger?
Good evening and thank you. My name is Steve Winger and I started teaching in the Santa Barbara School District in nineteen seventy-two. I spent twenty-five years in the district and I just want to say that those eight or nine teachers who have been bypassed for the incentive spent over a hundred years doing the right thing for their students. And we're asking you to spend one day to do the right thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winger. Oh, board members, this was really, this was not good news, obviously, for us to get and we know how devastating it is for the teachers that are involved. Comments? Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I'll just start out by saying it was a real blow to us too, I think, to see this legal decision. And, and it's an incredible shame. And I know personally that I was, you know, hoping that we could do something for those of you in this situation and, and now we're confronted with this legal decision. And I know, you know, you are going to know, you're going to feel about this for a long time. I know that, you know, that this is not something that, that ever goes away when it happens. And I've shared this with the board, but my mother-in-law actually was in a similar situation twenty years ago at UCSB and to this day, she still talks about the fact that right, right after she retired, there was an incentive offered and, and I know how painful it is. So I guess I, my question would just be, are there any creative options? I mean, we've been asked to see if there are. I mean, are there?
Well, you know, these are wonderful teachers and there are others and they did the right thing. And the idea of an incentive did not surface until the end of the year. And every single board member has expressed to me how, how terrible this feels, but frankly, I don't know how to make it right. And I don't know of any options that will fix this that are legal.
Dr. Noel?
I want to say that the superintendent did the right thing in putting this on the public agenda, that it was, in my opinion, a violation of the Brown Act to talk about it in closed session. And now that it's on the agenda, I think we, we've been asked to do, do something creative. This is not a very creative idea, but, and it may not be acceptable, but there's, there's a talent pool here and I can't believe that that talent could be of value to the district in some kind of consulting capacity. It may take, take a little thinking to, to see exactly where it would fit, but, and I'm not, as I say, I'm not sure that these good teachers would be willing to, to do it, but what we're offering them now is just pretty brutal. Nothing. And if we could at least offer something, it might be a step in the right direction, but I don't, if it takes, certainly can't invent this here. But I would, I'd like to see some creative effort going into trying to map the, this, these skills and this experience into our needs in a way where we may be, be able to, to continue to use their services for pay.
Mr. Herron?
Yeah, you know, I agree with everybody who's, who's talked, but I still feel and must say, just because of some of the letters, some of the comments, you know, I can truly, truly sit here and say that the incentive of a hundred and fifty dollars was to get teachers to tell us early they wanted to retire. It surely didn't make them want to retire. When we, when we first brought this up, when I first brought it up on July ninth, it was purely an idea that I tossed out as something that would be interesting to look into. It turned out, it was looked into, it being very possible. Originally, it was not going to be possible because of the need to negotiate with the teachers' association. Turned out that the teachers' association did negotiate and we came up with this option one. Unfortunately, the twenty-five thousand dollar number in a way was decided upon for false reasoning, false answers to questions from higher authority. And so we can't sit here and justify the twenty-five thousand based upon the reason that was given at the time, but instead, but actually, it was twenty-five thousand to incentivize some teachers to do something they wouldn't have done naturally. To me, there's a big difference between the teachers who voluntarily decide to retire and the ones that responded to this offer later as, in response to an offer to get them to do something that wasn't in their plans. To me, there is a difference between the two set of teachers. But I can honestly say it was July nine, June ninth, when it was first brought up by me. It was then on the agenda, June sixteenth, with no dollar amount, subject to negotiation with the teachers. And then on the twenty-third, ninth, twenty-third, it came back as a agreement with the teachers' association. To me, it's a total different set of circumstances and there was absolutely no intent to do anything wrong, to hurt any teacher. It turns out that it did, but there was sure no intent by anybody sitting up here to do that. It was done for the right reasons because stimulus money was there to use for a one-time and we took the advantage of doing that. It's awful the way it has turned out, but it sure wasn't done up, up here with any intent to have the harm that took place.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I think we probably, in, in some ways, we're probably all saying the same thing. I'm pretty confident that really probably nobody thinks there wasn't, that we intentionally tried to, you know, give some people additional funds and other people not. But I've learned in a lot of different situations that intent usually counts far less than impact. And, you know, we could have had great intentions, but the impact has really been, you know, fairly traumatic for people, including the board, because we now know that we have done something that really has, seemed to have really, well, what many people perceive to be unfair impacts on certain groups of people. And it does seem that sort of, you know, denying the additional, the incentive to people who did, I agree with you, did the right thing, did what we asked them to do by telling us early in the process that you were interested in retiring, that clearly that, that seems to be unfair. The, the problem is in how incentive fun, an incentive plan works in the first place. As, as Mr. Herron pointed out, the whole purpose of an incentive plan is not to pay people who are going to do something anyways. It's to give people an incentive to do something that they wouldn't otherwise do, that these people would not have retired if it hadn't been for this plan. As a result, you know, I can certainly say for myself, maybe this was true for others, that we were, I was looking at it from sort of a fiscal point of view. This is a way to get people to retire so that we, so that the district can save some money. If we don't do this, they won't retire, we won't get that savings. It wasn't until after we made the decision to do it and people started to raise these concerns that I realized how that would be for the people who had already submitted their retirement plans. Unfortunately, it was in that discussion, was because the board really sort of recognized that there was, I don't, I don't want to say unfairness because I'm not sure everybody on the board perceives it as unfairness, but at least some concerns that we had about having done. having done that. And we were trying to come up with a plan for how to address it, that that is how we discovered this. So I'm, I do want to correct that, the statement that we were hiding behind a law. Um, we really, we were fairly shocked to know that this was the law. Is the only way we discovered it was the law is because we were trying to come up with a plan for how to rectify this, and we're told that our plan wasn't gonna fly. Um, so, you know, all of this doesn't make, probably, doesn't make anybody feel any better. But the answer is, or at least my comments are, just that we are trying to grapple with this. We thought we were being very creative. Some of you asked us to be creative. We thought we were being creative. We were trying to do, figure it out and work it out as best we could, and we hit this sort of brick wall. So we're kind of, we're basically back to square one. But I do want to say that the, the very sort of, um, impersonal bottom line is that we don't, we don't realize the savings that we were trying to get if we, um, go back and offer the same package to everybody who retired, which as it turns out now, we can't do anyways. Um, so I'm not sure where to go from here. I mean, I, I think probably all in the same boat. No, uh, none of us really know where to go from here, but we certainly understand, and I certainly realize that we didn't anticipate everything that this was going to mean when we made the decision. And for that, I apologize.
Thank you, board members, and I, I would simply echo everybody else's comments. I think we are all absolutely on the, uh, in the same, holding the same position on this. Um, it is 10:30. We are going to run past 10:30. Um, we have two items left on the agenda, item F1 and F6, and then we will need to return to the consent agenda. So next up is item F1, report on anticipated no child left behind adequate yearly progress test results.
And Dr. Davis Hayden will make this presentation.
Well, good evening or good night. I don't know how we approach this.
Go for good evening.
Good morning soon. Uh, I'm waiting for the slide to go up on the screen. There we go. Uh, I was hoping to be able to tell you that the predictions I'm gonna show you have been, um, bona fide by the, uh, release of the state data, but the state sent us an email yesterday saying that they're unfortunately delayed, and they would not release it today, which they were supposed to do, and, to, to districts, not public, but to us. And so for the following charts, they're still my raw predictions based upon star scores. I have, uh, taken a look at the, uh, raw star scores that have been posted on DataQuest, and they pretty much correspond to what I'm presenting here. And I've also looked at a organization called School Charts that posted data on our school district, and it's also very similar. Both of them are either 1% or so up or down from my predictions here, so it's probably pretty accurate, but we have to wait another few days for the state to, uh, release the scores. Um, this is, uh, what our last five years looked like, and I think Brian showed this chart, uh, a, a board meeting ago. And this is the gains that we are seeing in, uh, English Language Arts, and this is the elementary school district. So that's a very healthy jump, and, uh, it's for pretty much every school in the elementary school district. There's one or two schools that did not share this jump, and, uh, we'll get those data on those schools, um, at a later board meeting. And this is what it looks like for the math over the last five years, and this is the jump we saw in math. So as Robin likes to say, we're finally starting to see the results of all the training and all the professional development that, uh, that has gone into this. Um, the next slide then shows, uh, this doesn't show as, the, the, the graph is condensed now because we got almost all the percentages up there, so it's, it doesn't show the dramatic rise. But you can see that all the subgroups also, uh, had a nice rise across the board. So this wasn't just in one group or another group, it was the whole class, uh, rising up. Um, so that's the elementary district. If we go on to the junior highs, the same thing here, we saw a, a nice steady increase in ELA and a continued steady increase in ELA. The junior highs, of course, if you take a look at that chart, have been our stars in several ways, I guess. They've been the stars of the district in terms of continually rising, uh, percent proficiencies. And the math had a nice jump and then kind of leveled out, and a huge jump once again. So, uh, the junior highs are having really nice gains, uh, across the board. This is their, uh, subgroups, and once again, all the subgroups had really nice rises. Take a look at that blue one for English learners. That's a really nice rise in English learners', uh, percent proficiencies. If we wanted, uh, I was asked to take a look at the Algebra I percent proficiencies across the junior high schools, and once again, we had a, a nice jump in Algebra I scores. Um, we're fine tuning, looking at who takes Algebra I and all that, so I've got, I'm got, I've talked to John Becko and several of the other principals about this. So, uh, I, with the, um, anticipated, um, mandatory taking of Algebra I CSTs in eighth grade, some of our schools did something a little different, and I think that that jump would have been much higher. What we see, that nice rise, it would have been even higher if they had not done that anticipation of, of, of having mandatory Algebra I testing in eighth grade. Um, so if they go back to how they used to do it, which is to place the kids in the right test, I think we would have seen even a bigger gain in our Algebra I scores. The senior highs, uh, senior highs have always been scoring fairly high in APIs and percent proficiencies, and you, I put the state targets there to show you that they've always scored quite high. But the senior highs have not shown any gains. In fact, as you see there, two of them, two of them actually showed some losses, uh, in their percent proficiencies on English Language Arts. And if we look at math, uh, one school did go up, but the other schools just went sideways on it. And, uh, once again, though, high, quite a bit above the state, the, uh, NCLB targets for how they're supposed to be performing. Uh, in the secondary district for the high schools, it's been a couple of the subgroups that have been getting them in trouble. But overall, they've been doing quite well.
Davis, could you describe the difference between star tests at the elementary and junior high level, and then exit exam tests used at the high schools?
Well, NCLB, uh, asks for percent proficiencies. And so in the elementary schools and the junior high schools, the ta- tests that they have used to demonstrate percent proficiency has been the star exam, which has math and English. It also has other tests on it, but for NCLB, they're only looking at the math and the English. They decided to go with the Casey exam, uh, in high school. And it, they could have gone with the star exam, but they chose the Casey exam, and they chose just 10th grade Casey. So when I present percent proficiencies for the high schools, I usually present the Casey instead of the star exam, because that's the one that counts for no child left behind. The star exam scores, if you remember, uh, a couple of board meetings ago, I presented the APIs, and I demonstrated how our APIs had been kind of level, not going up, and how the state APIs had been slot, you know, slowly rising, but ours hadn't gone up. Well, the API does take into account star scores, too, so that's a better indication of a, a parallel indication between elementaries, the junior, and a senior high is the API, 'cause it takes into account the star test and the Casey in the API for the high schools. So that, is there a little brief primer there on, on, on the test? The star test, unfortunately, in high school, is not taken as seriously by the high school students. They do take the Casey seriously, and so that, that is also another reason why it's more important to present the Casey for, uh, how the high schools are doing. Any questions about this preliminary report?
I would like to go back, um, to the Algebra I, uh, chart. And, um, one of the things that happened, of course, over the past year is that we brought in a new Algebra I curriculum, um, the CPM curriculum, uh, for all of our junior high schools. Um, but one of the things, you, you haven't gotten it disaggregated here by junior high school.
I do know.
Or by subgroup. But, um, one of the things that I noticed in looking at the data is, of course, we have these two junior highs, Lacumbra and Lacalina, who, whose algebra scores are just stellar. And, um, and then two who may have tested inappropriately, but I think even if you corrected for, uh, the, uh, who tested, um, Santa Barbara Junior High and Galita Valley, they show growth overall, um, but not the kind of growth in some of the subgroups like disadvantaged or Latino that the other two junior highs did. But I just think it's so important for us to see that within our own district, I mean, we have unbelievable success stories, that I would really hope that we are putting in place strategies to make sure that the two junior highs that weren't up to those standards are, are looking at what's going on, um, at Lacumbra and Lacalina, uh, to be sure that those things get replicated.
I'd like to point out, though, that I took a pretty in-depth look at Santa Barbara Junior High.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe that the Algebra I scores may have shown as big a gains as Lacumbra did and Lacalina did if they had tested the same kid, students, on the test that Lacumbra did. Their general math scores may not have shown the gains, because Lacumbra also had gains in general math. But I think that the algebra test scores would have been parallel if they had tested the same students, the same demographic of students, uh, in terms of test scores as Lacumbra did.
That would be great, and it'd also be, uh, great for us to get that information if, um, it's possible to say, you know, these are students that actually took the Algebra I course and that, you know, matching up with their test scores. That would be wonderful.
Exactly, but it's gonna, unfortunately, because they did take different classes and did take different tests, we'll never be able to actually do that comparison. Um, but I think, uh, John Becko is gonna be talking with the other principals. I, hopefully, Robin, we're gonna probably come up with a more uniform policy on this so that there will be a better, uh, we will be more able to see what's actually happening with Algebra I scores.
Great. Board members, comments and other things? Dr. Noel?
Could you, is there a state comparison that we could, for this?
Um, yes, there is, and I did not know that it was gonna be requested until, uh, you know, actually today. Uh, when the real scores come out, you know, the state approved scores come out, I'll definitely put the state comparison on there, and, uh, it'll probably show like it showed with the API scores that I presented a couple of months ago. It'll show that the state has slowly increased the percent proficiency year after year after year, whereas our school district was pretty flat. So this, this will show us catching up with that state increase. I don't know how much it'll show us catching up until I get the data in front of me.
Yeah, yeah. No, I asked, and we had a conversation earlier, but my, my point was, I went home after the last time we saw scores, and, and I looked at the state averages, and however great we looked, we were still just, up, just a tad above or below the state averages. And so I, I went, wait a minute, what's going on here? And then, uh, Dr. Hayden explained to me, uh, that what you want to look at is the state rank, and that, as you just said, that because, uh, we're flat and the state's going up, our state rank goes down. And, and, and those scores, you know, me, I'm always looking at similar schools. I wasn't looking at the state rank, and you look at that, and, you know, it's quite a different picture.
The, uh, all this is on your webpage on the Board Focus Goals data sheets, and so all of you can look at the, uh, the latest scores are not in. Soon as they're released, I'll put them onto those, uh, Board Focus Goal, uh, on the, on the webpage. But all that will be there, and you're right, the state ranks is a, is a very interesting, uh, story behind those state ranks that needs to be looked into.
And I do want to express gratitude that those, those scores are all on my website.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say, I think we're all really heartened by, by these gains. I mean, I think it's, it's wonderful to see, and I guess the next question really is, is why? I mean, how, how do we identify what accounted for it? I know we've got lots of things in the mix, and so, and, and maybe they're all working in conjunction, but it would be really nice to know.
Well, actually, uh, Robin can answer that, and so can Brian, 'cause they asked the principals exactly that question.
Do you want me to, I'll, I'll try to repeat everything. Um, we do know that a lot of the training, starting four years ago in English Language Development in the elementary district, um, that took, you know, two years to get all teachers trained, I mean, every teacher trained and the program implemented, so that every English learner was having the 30 to 45 minutes of English Language Development daily. So that was a huge piece, really in our overall, um, growth. So those kids that started like in kindergarten four years ago, and then all the other kids that are in the school, we're now seeing those students now, four years later, were just tested. And so a lot of those students had a really strong beginning, and, uh, that ELD along with other training, um, has, is paying off now. We're seeing the results. We also know that in looking in detail at the data, that we have, we have far fewer students in the far below. When you look at the bands, there's, you know, it's in the teens or lower now, where it used to be in the twenties or thirties that were down in that far below. So over the years, we've seen those numbers, that the group just keep going up, and we have quite a large group, 30% or so average, uh, across in the basic group. So we anticipate a, a bump again next year, because there's such a large group there moving up into the proficient and advanced. So there's that piece. When we asked the, the principals, really what they felt was the, you know, foundation for this, training came up, of course, but they said really a targeted focus on instruction every day, you know, teachers and administrators, targeted on instruction, professional learning communities, um, differentiation, I'm trying to remember, those two, what I remember so much, the assessment, the formative assessment, but instructional piece.
Focus on learning, classroom instruction, PLCs, TLCs, teacher learning communities, professional learning communities, uh, benchmark assessments, benchmark assessments, benchmark assessments, continuous assessment and progress monitoring, uh, and maximizing the use of instructional time and instructional opportunities. And that was the list.
Sounds like the state's list of nine.
It is.
It does, and it sounds like the list that we see repeatedly in research.
And what we've been focused on for, for years.
Mrs. Cudero?
Well, I, too, was really happy to see the gains that we, that we made. Um, in looking, though, at the achievement gap, it doesn't seem as if we're closing the achievement gap at all. Um, and if all the groups were exceeding standards and they were just all increasing, you know, proportionately, that might be one thing, but when we have the non-white groups, the, the Latino subgroup, the English learner subgroup, the socio, socioeconomic disadvantaged subgroup, and the students with disability subgroup, so much lower than the white subgroup, um, I'm really concerned that we seem to be experiencing all this success with improving the subgroups proportionally, but not, but we need to improve those lower groups disproportionately. They should, we need to be improving, making even greater improvements, because they're so much lower. Um, and so I'm, I'm concerned to see that that isn't happening.
Well, obviously, we are as well. We, you know, we talk about, we don't want to really close the gap. We wanna, we wanna close it in a way where our subgroups, the ones you're speaking of, are moving up. Um, they are all moving up a lot, but, but you're right, we haven't, we have not closed that gap. And that's where our targeted, you know, our, a lot of our professional development and our energy and attention to specific students, the, you know, response to intervention, the pyramid of interventions, I mean, all of the, the efforts that we're putting in to help students are really aimed at those subgroups. students are really aimed at those subgroups.
I'd like to add something there, too. This is just one case, and I need more time to analyze the data, but one principal was reporting that, I think they had 90% of their second graders being proficient or advanced. And that's a school that is about 89% Latino or something like that. So what we're looking at here is, you may start to see those gains as these students start to work their way through the system. And if it turns out that our lower grades are actually having such success, especially with Latinos, that might be the case, but I haven't had a chance to really take a look at the data.
Dr. Noel?
Kids don't go to districts, they go to schools. And it seems to me that it's very hard to know what's going on here until we get the school-by-school report. That may mean that one school was vertical, or two or three schools were vertical and a couple were flat, maybe some even going down. And especially when we want to move from the data to the diagnosis, what's working, we really need to know what's going on at the schools more refined.
I can give you a quick count on that. Seventeen out of the 21 schools listed showed what looked like significant gains. A number of them may make safe harbor and may be frozen in program improvement, but we need to hear the final results first.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Herron?
Yeah, and answering, partially answering Susan's question, and she probably experienced the same thing. A year ago, we were making the rounds of meeting with the principals. And obviously, one of the questions we talked about was exactly this, because we were told that the district hasn't made any changes. It's been very level. And the charts showed that they were very level. And so we were faced with the dilemma of, why aren't they making changes to make these things start going up? Every single principal was absolutely adamant that their scores would go up. I mean, I look at Emilio and McKinley, I'd be curious to see what their scores are there. I mean, he was-
They sure did.
Did they go up? He was absolutely, I mean, he was focused. Every single child, they were going to work on every child. Every single principal said this was going to happen. And I find that amazing, that a year ago, they were saying this, and now, a year, we see it. But we had a focused group of principals that helped make this happen with their team.
Well, significantly, our program improvement elementaries, Franklin saw big gains, McKinley saw big gains, Harding saw big gains. I think the biggest gains, though, were at Community Academy and then at the junior high level at La Cumbre. Peabody made great gains.
I want to see those state ranks. Actually, every one of those.
Yes, and we won't see those until April or May of this next year, unfortunately. I would love to see those as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hayden.
You're welcome.
We now will move on to item F6, Report on the 2009-10 Adopted State Budget. We save the cheerful news for the very end of the meeting when we're all depressed and tired.
Yeah, this is an important report because it sets the course for some things that we need to get done. Eric Smith, our Deputy Superintendent for Business Services, will make the presentation.
I'm going to do it sitting down, because I'm afraid I'm going to fall over. As Dr. Sarvas mentioned, this is a report on the 2009-10 State Budget for K-12 Education. And I think the place we need to start is with the economy. Briefly, the national economic outlook. Recession began in December of '07, it's now about 21 months old, longest downturn since the Great Depression. Although there are some signs that we've hit bottom, and we might be looking at a, probably a gradual recovery. Stock market's up about 40% since March of 2009, where it hit a bottom of $6,600. The rate of job loss has slowed, gross domestic product is no longer in freefall. Although California has fared worse than most of the nation, with some exceptions like Michigan. So when you look at our unemployment rate, which reached 11.5%, and I'll show you a graph in a minute, it's actually in excess of what the national unemployment rate is. We also have seen a greater drop in median home values because we're at the center of the subprime mortgage crisis. Our budget deficit on a statewide basis is probably the worst of all 50 states. So as a result, our economic recovery might lag behind the national recovery. This is an interesting graph, which shows you the state's general fund revenues since '07-'08. The first high column there is an actual in terms of revenues received in '07-'08. Then you're looking at the next column where it's $91.1 billion. That was the January governor's proposal for '08-'09. You could see how it was revised down through the year. Then once again, over optimistic projections of revenue in the following year, and once again, the same type of trend where it was revision upon revision. Here's national unemployment data with respect to job loss. You can see, you know, the significant amount of job loss between '07 and '09. This is data from the UCLA Economic Forecast. You can see a gradual recovery projected. You also see a similar graph with respect to California. So let's go through a brief history of what happened in '08-'09 and what came forth in '09-'10. Our economy basically collapsed, revenues declined, leading to latest state budget in history. Three months after the constitutional deadline, before the inks dried, the budget's already out of balance. Governor calls multiple special sessions, unsuccessful in hammering out a deal. Five months later, in February, we finally get a deal, which was a 17-month budget, but it was basically predicated on ballot propositions that did not pass. Revenues continue to fall, budget is immediately out of balance, governor calls a special session. We had to pull somebody, or he had to pull somebody across the aisle, or from his party over to the democratically-controlled legislature. There was repercussions for those Republicans that voted for a basically Democratic budget. The structural deficit at the state level was never addressed, colloquially called a "kick the can" budget, where they just kicked the can down the road. So here we are. One of the things that's, the most significant elements of the budget is the eroding Prop. 98 Minimum Guarantee, which allowed them to basically cut down to the minimum without even suspending Prop. 98 because of the erosion of state revenues. One of the things that was discussed last year was basically whether there was going to be a maintenance factor based on Proposition 98 formulas. The governor's office asserted that there should be no maintenance factor relative to the '08-'09 and '09-'10 budget because the funding was projected to be determined under Test 1 rather than Test 2. That was basically solved in negotiations. There is a bill that says that $9.2 billion is owed to K-12 or K-14 education, but I wouldn't hold your breath that we're ever going to see that money. Okay, so how does the adopted state budget differ from what we saw in the May revision? There was a proposal in Transportation to cut transportation, home-to-school transportation up to 65%. That was rejected. There was basically a proposal to defer all mandates. Basically, that didn't go through. There was also some proposals relative to CalWorks, and that was actually rejected. There is Prop. 98 funding. Under QEA was tweaked, in an interesting kind of maneuver, what they did was take QEA money, backfill it with revenue limit, and then take federal stimulus dollars to backfill that. It's really kind of a circular reference there. Maintenance factor is clarified. And one of the things that was actually favorable for us, several of the programs in Tier 3 were based on '07-'08 ADA. So where we went into enrollment decline between '07-'08 and '09, it actually gave us a higher level of funding for things like K-3 CSR and supplemental hourly programs. Okay, '09 revenue limit. The '09 budget revision, we had a deficit factor applied to the revenue limit of 7.84%. The May revision sought to reduce revenue limits by an additional 1.417 and increase to a higher ongoing deficit level of 11.428%. That didn't happen, but what did happen is they ultimately recaptured that $1.6 billion, basically through a 250, which now we estimate is a $254 per ADA one-time cut imposed in '09-'10. In our district, that's about $3.4 million. And the whole idea there is, is if you know anything about Prop. 98, is that whatever you spend under Prop. 98 in the prior year becomes the floor in the next year. So this is a way of basically reducing the floor. And so this is something that was not contemplated in our adopted budget. It wasn't even on the radar even into late June. It's significant. And one of the peculiarities of this is that if you're in basic aid and you don't have revenue limit dollars, the cuts actually affect your state categorical programs. So in our analysis, it looks like about, all the cuts will have to come from state categoricals in the elementary. And because this will drive us into second, into basic aid in the secondary district, it's about 50-50 split, about 50% revenue limit, and a 50% categoricals will have to own up in the secondary district. Okay, so then what happened was, in '09-'10, we did see an increase to the deficit on the revenue limit. It was a slightly, a slight increase over what was proposed at the end of '08-'09. So now we're getting about, let's see, $81, $81.65 on the dollar. And to give you an idea of what that looks like, here are the revenue limit deficits since '93-'94. You can see in '09-'10, nothing's even close to that. And to give you an idea of how that actually looks, if you look at revenue limit only, and this is when I was talking about the volatility of the revenue limit, funding will be $837 lower in '09-'10 than it was in '07-'08. If you take, let's say, $14,680 in our district, that's $12 million bucks we've lost since '07-'08 relying on revenue limit. So I would think that would be a compelling case to move toward basic aid. '09-'10 budget revision does not fund the statutory COLA for '08-'09 and '09-'10. That's no big surprise. Couple other peculiarities of changes from the May revise, or since the May revise, school districts can sell real property for any one-time purpose for the next three years. There are certain restrictions relative to, the board would have to certify that they have no extreme hardship deferred maintenance applications they're going to file, and there's other certifications you have to make to the state allocation board. Textbook adoption timelines are suspended. The reserve for economic uncertainties is reduced to 1/3 for fiscal year '09-'10 only, but must be fully restored by fiscal year '11-'12. You probably saw we had an approval letter from the County Office of Education, but one of the things they're concerned about is that second subsequent year. There's also a nuance in law that says that if you can't meet your reserve in the second subsequent year because of loss of federal ARAs, then the county office can't qualify you as qualified or negative. But I think they expect us to put a plan together to remedy it, and we will. We'll talk about that in a minute. Changes since the May revise, I talked about instructional materials. School districts can sweep ending balances. Well, we have no ending balance there. Timelines for having new adoptions are extended for five years, and that's also inclusive of program improvement districts, which wasn't the case before. Our next steps, identify amount of reductions necessary to restore reserve and reduce or eliminate structural deficit, because we have two issues now. We have the one-time hit, right, of $3.4 million, which is basically zaps our reserve, which is really, in my mind, a one-time restoration. And then we have the structural deficit, which is the ongoing imbalance between revenues and expenditures due to enrollment decline and the revenue limit deficit and things of that nature. And we'll be able to show you that graphically here in a minute. So we'll need to establish a timeline for board action, and, you know, hopefully do that this fall, because the county office wants to see in our next multi-year, that has to be produced at first interim, they want to see how we're going to get to that 3% in the second subsequent year. So I'm going to have Meg bring up the multi-year projection. And we're going to show you the ugly version first, and then we'll tweak it a little bit.
Okay, so what you're looking at here is, the first projections were on the unrestricted side for the adopted budget. So as you can see here, we were anticipating on the unrestricted side to have a 4.76% reserve. If you go over now to our estimated revised multi-year projections, we have a little bit different story here. We have a 5.32%, a 1.3%, and a negative 1.53%, which differs from what we had at the adopted budget, and I want to show you why. This is just on the unrestricted side now. In the revenue limit line, the $73 million at the top, I have taken out 1.2 million, which we would be, which we would have in state aid had we not had the $250 hit. So what the state will do is they'll say, if you have $3 million and you, your $250 per ADA comes to 2 million, then you have a million in state aid. So if you're supposed to get 3 million, your hit is 2 million, we're going to take it right out of state aid. However, we have one district that is basic aid this year. They know that, they'll know that at P1. They won't declare us, but they'll need to take that money. So what they're going to do is they're going to take $250 or $54 per ADA, some out of the unrestricted categoricals, because remember, we moved some of those. They went from restricted to unrestricted. And then we have to take the remaining amount out of the restricted side. With the high schools, a little different. We had 1.2 million in state aid, we're projecting 1.2 million state aid. So our hit on the high school is 2.4 with 250 per ADA. I use $250 because that's what I had 10 minutes ago. So anyway, so we're going to take the 1.2 off of revenue limit, or the state aid, and then we have to go into the unrestricted 250, $250 per ADA on the unrestricted side, and then another, the balance. So 1 million, 1.2 on the categorical side and 1.2 million on the revenue limit side. And those are, those estimates are reflected in here. Now, another large difference you'll see is over here on the contribution side, on the local contribution or the encroachment, other financing sources. You see that that was a negative $7 million. We're usually, we're around $12 million. This is all our encroachment, so we have to subsidize the restricted side, special education, transportation, things like that. Well, what I had done in the adopted budget was, we got the ARAs money that is supposed to be unrestricted. Well, they don't let you, at first, they said, yeah, take that chunk of money and put it in the unrestricted side. That's what you're seeing there in the adopted budget. However, they said, no, you can't do that. You have to keep it on the restricted side and track it there. So what I did is, I put this back where it belonged, and I took the money out of the unrestricted salaries, and we're going to move them over to the restricted side in 3,200, which is where we can put them. So it's a perfectly legal move, so it's kind of nets it out. So anyway, we come down, and as you can see, on the third year out, we don't make our reserve. This one-time hit of 3.4 million is all, half of, most of it is on the unrestricted side. The remaining amount in the high school is on the restricted side. So on the restricted side, you'll see where things are going to change a little bit in the revised projections. Because now, in '10-'11, we're expected to be basic aid barely in the high school by $446,000. So therefore, there's this new situation. Seems like it's just great that we get into basic aid and then we get hit. We are now expected to take a 5.8% reduction in categoricals on the base revenue limit prior, or the revenue limit prior to deficit. So before the deficit hits- So before the deficit hits, we have to take a 5.81% hit on the categoricals. And this is our equal, basic aid's equal amount to whatever the revenue limit districts take. So that's in the bright yellow, bolded. So in 10-11, we take a $5.5 million hit, and in 11-12, we take a $5.3 million hit. This is with the transfers out, which would make our revenue limit that is subject to deficit less. So we stroll, come down here, and you can see that we balance these out so that we net to zero in those two years. But you can imagine, we have to take 18 and 24 in those two years of FTEs, and 15.39 FTEs in 11-12. So combined, it's looking rather bleak. We have a negative fund balance, ending negative fund balance of 1.5 million.
So, that's if you did nothing.
And we will not do nothing.
Right. So we started looking at this.
We can't.
I mean, I think there's two things. On the restricted side, I think it's, the premise there is, we're going to make restricted programs live within their means. And then here, we're going to have to make some adjustments on the unrestricted side. So the question is, how much do we have to do in 9-10, and how much do we have to do in 11-12? And that's kind of what we played with a little bit today. So what she's doing in the red there is simulating cuts, and then you could look in the red at the bottom, whether we're above the 3%.
And one thing I want to point out, that what they kept telling us at the SSC conference is that, when they, when they developed this adopt, this revised adopted budget, that they knew that revenues were down for California for the first two quarters, but they did nothing to reflect it in their budget. So basically, they, they designed this budget that they knew if it kept going the way it was going, it, they would not make their, their, their revenue projections, which is exactly what you saw on Eric's, where they kept missing it, missing it. They're going to do it again. So, well, that's my prediction, they'll do it again. So I think there are further hits coming.
Yeah, and we purposely spread that over the two years. I mean, you could do the five or six all in the first year if you want, but, but I think the other thing is that, you know, we've already accounted for reductions in FTEs due to the enrollment decline and all those kinds of things already, so.
And I wanted, I wanted to also mention that the 23.5 and the 17.65 were already in our adopted budget. So this 2.5 and 2.8 represent more cuts either in staffing or somewhere else.
Meg, if you take both those, take, take the 2.5 out, just eliminate it for a second.
Where's the delete button?
So, the 5.32, and this is just on the unrestricted side, is 9-10?
Oh, I'm sorry. 10-11. Oh, wait, what was your question?
Yeah, 5.32 is 9-10.
Yeah, it's 9-10.
So what you're seeing there is the effect of the $250 per ADA hit. Look what it does to your reserve there. And the unrestricted side, you're at 5.32, you take that hit, and then the way it rolls forward, it's, it just obliterates it.
And notice too, the reason why we're doing better is, we're projecting our ending fund balance to come in higher for two reasons. This, the, those rev, those resources that we're now no longer holding off, and we're in the restricted side, and now they're in the unrestricted side, that helps our reserve, even though those are the, those, the SIP, the pupil retention block grant, those are all over there, but they will support the schools. You know, that's what they, they use to, to support their schools. So that is really on the unrestricted side, but it's still, in our eyes, restricted in, to a certain extent. Plus what we plan to sweep over there, which is not quite as much as we thought we were going to have.
So you can put the 2.5 back in there now, make it look prettier.
He said hopefully.
But, I, I mean, to give you an idea of the absurdity of what I'm hearing out of the state, when I was talking to somebody from FICMAT the other day, he said he had a conversation with somebody from the Department of Finance, and this is what they think. They think that when those categorical programs were deemed Tier 3, that school boards just laid off everybody that was tied to those programs, and you just absorbed that, it's all unrestricted. That's what they think up there.
Wow.
So, you talk about a disconnect. So, I, I think there's two things. We're going to do whatever we can do in the current year to increase fund balance, but this kind of gives us an idea of where we're going.
And may I ask, when you think we're going to get to talking about?
Soon.
Very soon. I have to give my hats off to both of you, and to business services in general, because I've never seen a budget this complicated, with so many last-minute changes. And for us, on top of that, to be two separate districts with a common administration, and one district basic aid, one popping in and out of basic aid, this is the most convoluted thing to figure out. And so, compliments to you for, for tackling it, but it's terrible news. And I'm really not looking forward to the fall, or the spring, and probably next year. So, I'm very sorry to hear this news. And I don't know if board members have any questions at this point. Obviously, we'll be coming back to this very soon. Mr. Herron?
I guess at some point, if it's possible, I'd like to know what our, the decision we made earlier on interdistrict, how that relates to these numbers.
Well, we, we do have the 280 ADA in these numbers, because they are our projection.
You mean, it's out or it's in?
They're, they're...
That's a good question.
The interdistrict transfers...
Are out.
Are out, but they're in, they're in my projection.
Yeah. So the associated expense is gone too?
No.
No.
Just the revenue.
Okay.
Oh, so that will actually make a more dramatic effect.
That's about $300, or $600,000, wasn't it, with the, it was associated with eight FTEs at 85,000.
Yeah, that's about right. Close enough.
Okay. All right, at this point, we will go ahead and move on with the agenda to item G, which is returning to consent items designated for discussion. We had a number of items pulled. Number one was item D1, approval of minutes, and that was Mrs. Deacon.
On page three of five, D6 stayed on this consent agenda list, but I think we pulled D6. Do you remember? That was the, the approval between the agreement of the city.
Yes, we did pull it.
And for things like corrections of minutes, always feel free to email the district ahead of time, so they could just put a corrected copy for us here. So, shall we approve it? Is there a motion to approve that with the correction of removing D6?
Move to approve with correction.
Second.
We'll give it to Mrs. Cordero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Item D4, approval of recommended personnel action items dated August 21st.
I have a number of questions on this. One of them is, I just want, I don't understand, there, there's a lot of, there are many very high salaries here, and, as temporary people. And I recognize at least some of them as being retirees. And, and I don't, I, I thought the idea was to replace very high salaries with lower sal, salaries lower on the scale. And I'm wondering why we're hiring both, one, full FTE, as well as fractional FTE people, who seem to be so senior, who are repaying, I'm just looking here, these are rates of pay, 84,000, 88,000, 93,000, 86,000. I wondered if someone could explain that to me.
I know that in past years, that's been about what's already budgeted for the previous position, and not necessarily what the person has, is being paid for the current year, especially these ones that are temps. But I don't know if somebody here can address that?
Well, I do know from Ann Peake's response that, or maybe it was Chris's response.
I didn't quite hear.
I do know from the response from personnel, that none of these are people who are offered the retirement incentive, nor even the last group of retirees.
Well, that's not my point. It's just that, I mean, if, if, say you've got a, here's a, someone, Santa Barbara High School, I, I happen to know its math.
Yes.
.2 FTE, 17,235. That's a rate of pay of $88,000 a year.
Yes.
Plus benefits. And I'm just saying, why, why are we getting?
That includes benefits.
Does that include benefits?
Includes benefits.
Okay. Why, why are we going for that level? Why aren't we, why are not we, why are we not going for people who don't, who don't make so much? And if it were one or two, I wouldn't even raise the point, but there are awful, quite a few of them in here, and have probably substantial amounts of money.
You know, I, many of our temporary teachers are the, you know, they've been working in our district for many years, particularly in the elementary district. I'm recognizing a lot of these names. So they are up there on the, on the pay scale, and those are the teachers who are higher back first, are temporaries, because we, we know them, they know the kids, some of them have been in our schools nine and 10 years.
Well, I, yeah, that doesn't answer my question, my question simply why.
Why are we hiring?
Why are we hiring in these very senior people for temps, rather than going out to get people who are, who make half the, oh, you know, a third, or two thirds or half? We would, if you just added it up in here, I think it would be a substantial saving.
The...
Do I miss, or am I misunderstanding what's going on?
I think the brief answer is that they still cost less than a 23-year veteran at that level, who would be costing, let's see, $80,000 plus, what, 22%, something like that. So, you know, something upwards of $100,000. And they were selected because we thought they would do the best job teaching children.
Okay, well, now, the next one, question on this is, one of my favorite questions. These people presumably have already started teaching, is that correct?
Yes, they're in the classroom, starting yesterday or last week.
Why did we, why did we not get this list at an earlier meeting, so that we're approving something before the expenditure is actually committed?
Without Dr. Robertson here. I know, it's, I actually see some things on here that, that aren't correct as of yesterday, because we're still, or Friday, we're still changing, and I'm sure that Dr. Robertson and Elaine Oviedo tried to get these in as fast as they could, but certainly by the last board meeting, which was August 11th, this was not in place, and it's still going to be different.
But, I want to chime in here and be really clear, that we approved a budget that included funding for teachers. Now, this is getting down to the specifics of which teachers in which position, but we already approved funding for teachers when we adopted the, the budget. So, I, I want to be careful that we're not nitpicky about, I'm sorry, a teacher has resigned unexpectedly, and we would love to have a teacher in this classroom, but it hasn't come to the board yet, so therefore, we, your, your children will sit there with...
But we were not presented with these...
Well, we're not...
I was not, there, I couldn't, the point I'm making tonight about the rates, I would love to have been able to make before a decision was made. I've presented, we are all presented with the decisions made when it's too late to do anything about it. I, I just find that, you know, unacceptable. Let me go on, let me go on to the next one. Under the hourlies, same point, but there's one particular hourly one that I, I won't point out, particular, you know, what it is, you think you know what it is, where the public certainly would like to have known in advance that that was going to happen, and, and had an opportunity to comment on it. That's all I have on, on D4. D6, D6?
D4. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Passes 4-1. Item D6, approval of the Save a Valuable Employee Save Assistance Program contract. Dr. Noel?
I pulled that, I just, I really wanted to just ask, and someone brought it up earlier about program evaluation, I think it was Mrs. Cordero, and I fully endorse the idea that we should be evaluating our programs, and I just wanted to ask whether that's ever been done with this program.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Elaine could probably answer that. But go ahead. Want to restate the question?
Restate the question, please.
Did you? I've got it now.
Yes, so has this program ever been evaluated?
I, not to my knowledge, as far as, I think, what you're asking, Dr. Noel. I think just informally, this program is very effective for our employees. It's a, it's a referral service. Our employees do access it. It's available in, for their own families, for staff issues. So as far as being effective, it's a very important service that we offer to our employees. And I think that, again, between personal issues that, that are occurring with families and, and employees, as well as employment issues, they are, are an excellent resource for our employees, and it's confidential. We occasionally make supervisor referrals to deal with some issues that are going on, conflict resolution, for example. But I would say, just again, informally, it is a great assistance for personal issues that our employees are facing.
I got, I got your evaluation, I'm wondering if it's ever been evaluated by someone else. Thank you.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I'm voting for it, but put in that plug for more program evaluations.
All right, it carries unanimously. Item D7, approval of tentative agreement between the Santa Barbara school districts and the California School Employees Association for this 2009-10 school year.
Yeah, I, I pulled that, and there, this is a tentative agreement between the union and the district, right? And, and it has been our practice to have tentative agreements, I believe, on the regular agenda, so there's an opportunity to speak. Now, one, it has also used to be our practice that you could, that members of the public could ask to speak to a particular item on the consent agenda, but that practice, that has been changed, so that now it is part of public comments. And it just seems to me that is nibbling away an awful lot at the, at the idea that tentative agreements should be fully aired, open for public comments. I, I hate to see this kind of thing on, on the consent agenda. It really belongs on the public, on the main agenda.
I would have to go back and research how often this has happened on the consent agenda, but I do want to clarify that you can still speak on each consent agenda item, it just happens during the public comment time.
Yeah, that's right, but there's no, yeah. Unless someone pulls it, there's not going to be any discussion of this, and it'll be very late at night. It might even be 11:30 at night when it happens.
Well, may I comment? You know, be, because, because of the limited time that we do actually have for board discussion and, and action, we have, over a period of time, moved more and more items onto consent. And if you'd like to allow more time, if you'd like to start your board meetings an hour earlier, or do something like that, as you consider your board policies in the future, or if you'd like to run later, I mean, traditionally, school districts...
We could cut out, we could cut out a little bit of the ceremonial stuff at the beginning too.
Well, we could do that.
Yeah.
Traditionally, school districts run into the wee hours of the morning, and a lot of work gets done at 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock. But, but we'd be happy to put as many items as you'd like on open session.
I, I understand your message, Dr. Sarvis, and I think it is the fallacy of the suppressed alternative. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
The fallacy of this...
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Item D8, approval of purchase order report for the period August 5, 2009 through August 18, 2009.
I pulled that because I'm still awaiting a separate report on that Mr. Herron asked for, the report on legal expenses. I haven't seen it, have I missed that?
I have it.
Well, it's...
It's on a future agenda for open discussion.
Yes, I can't remember. It's on for September, it's either the 8th or the, or the 25th, is it the 20, 20, sorry, I can add, right, 22nd?
I would like, in the future, to, because, and that one particularly, I asked for update today, the 25th. So if it's not going to be per my request, I'd like to know, you know, I don't mind it being put off, but I'd like to have known that it wasn't going to be done tonight.
Is there a motion? Move to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
No, aye.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Item D17, approval of the memorandum of understanding between Orffula Fund, Santa Barbara City College, and the Santa Barbara School Districts for school gardens at Monroe Elementary School.
That's me, I'll do this quickly, and I, actually, maybe this is something I could have just done informally, but I wanted the whole board to hear this. It seems to me that we're trying to recruit wellness council representatives from the schools, and there might be a natural pairing between the lead teachers at the elementaries and these gardens, so I just wanted to throw that out as an idea as we go to recruit people for that. So I will move to approve item D17.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. We are on to H, coming events, which we've gone over at the beginning of the meeting. Item I, board comments and correspondence. Any board comments or correspondence?
As a board comment, I just would like to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Sarvis and you, Madam President, for all the effort to accomplish the solution with the counselors. I think you did a great job in following what the board's motion was, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. And I would like to chime in and thank Dr. Sarvis and Mrs. Suwaski for bringing, and Dr. White, who's not here, for bringing Anthony Mohammed here. You mentioned him at the beginning of the meeting, a number of us were able to go see him, he was amazing. He was absolutely amazing, and I know that our staff across both districts really appreciated hearing from him. Future agenda items. Dr. Noel?
I lose track of how many, of my list, but I hope it includes having a report on the federal funds we've received, what do you call them, ARR, funds for special education, and plans for their expenditure, because I know we're spending them, and it'd be nice to have that report and an opportunity to talk about before they're all gone.
And I have already put that on the list.
Thank you very much.
Any others? Well, with no objection, then we're at item K, adjournment. Yay. Good night, everybody.